Welcome to the Guam Congress Building. The Committee on Health, Land Justice and Culture is now called to order today's Tuesday, April 11th, and the time is 3:21 PM. In compliance with the open government law, notices for these public hearings were published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Tuesday, April 4th and Friday, April 7th. And notices were also sent via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is live streamed via the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Individuals testifying today shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking, and please state your name before speaking for record-keeping purposes. We're keeping a verbatim transcript of these proceedings. We have three items on our agenda today. Bill number seven, introduced by Senator Chris Duñez. It's an act to add a new sections 19406 and 19505.1, and to amend sections 19405B, 19405C, 19604A, 19604C, 19604D2, and 19805C, all of Chapter 19 of Title 10 Guam Code annotated relative to prohibiting the suspension of constitutional rights and to repeal criminal penalties for violations of executive orders. The second bill on our agenda is Bill number 79-37COR, introduced by Senator Thomas Fisher, an act to amend section 80.37A1 of Article 2, Chapter 80, Title 9 Guam Code annotated relative to a special allegation of possession and use of a deadly weapon in the commission of a felony. The third item on our agenda is Bill number 21-37COR, introduced by Senator Duane T. D. S. Nicholas. It's an add to add a new Article 8 to Chapter 80, Title 9 Guam Code annotated relative to the creation of provision to authorize judicial corporal punishment as an additional form of judicial sentence. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here with me today. I'm Speaker Teresa Lahey, our vice chair is Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Duane S. Nicholas is here with us, Senator Telotite Tegui, Senator Tom Fisher, Senator Jesse Luhon, Senator Chris Duñez, and Senator Roy Canata. These are my colleagues for being here today. So we'll begin right away with the first agenda item, and we will allow the sponsor of the bill to introduce the bill. So Senator Chris Duñez.
Sidosmasi, Madam Chair, and all of our colleagues that have joined us, and certainly everyone who's shown up today to testify, or maybe just to listen to the testimony. Madam Speaker, today, Guam time, President Biden signed a resolution which was basically recognized legislation from the Republican-held leadership in Congress going all the way up to the Senate to end the public health emergency nationally a month early. It's uncanny, the timing, that we have the opportunity to hear this bill today, and I will speak basically on what the bill attempts to do. I guess the first question many people may ask is, why do we need Bill 737? An update on executive emergency powers. Madam Speaker, as you will remember, in the 36 Guam Legislature authored Bill 1136, which basically attempted to restructure the balance of powers under emergency powers by giving the legislature the power to renew a public health emergency, as it was open-ended to begin with under the first formulation of the public health emergency powers which were enacted over 20 years ago. The bill passed, but unfortunately, it was vetoed, and we were unable throughout the term to successfully get an override to balance the powers and allow this legislature to have a say, and to also have the people of Guam have their voice heard through the resolution-introduction process, and the ability to come down and speak about how they feel the emergency is being implemented and the effects. This would be normal, everyday people from walks of life, businesses, any walk of life, really, who many of us know those folks for visiting our offices and giving us their opinions on a daily basis. Unfortunately, that bill failed override. So on the introduction of Bill 737, what I did, Madam Speaker, is add to what Bill 1136 was attempting to do. Madam Speaker, the first thing the bill does is it reaffirms our organic act rights as citizens of Guam. I think it's important to read these rights into the record, and basically, under 19406, the reaffirmation of organic act constitutional rights. No executive order, agency, directive, or administrative rule or regulation issued or promulgated pursuant to a declaration of a state of public health emergency, or an anticipation or contemplation of a declaration of state of public health emergency shall prohibit freedom from assembly in one's residential property, prohibit the free exercise of religion, diminish or suspend a person's Second Amendment constitutional rights as specified in Chapter 60 of Title 10 Guam Code annotated, deprive any person of liberty without due process of law, permit the confiscation or seizure of any lawfully owned property without due process and just compensation, create or have the effect to create criminal acts or redefine or expand the scope of existing criminal acts or civil violations that are defined by public law, impose excessive fines, deny access to the public information as required by the Freedom of Information Act. This bill reiterates those rights that we all have. Madam Speaker, the second thing that this bill does is once again does what Bill 1136 was trying to do, and that is to ensure that this legislative body has the process and the power to renew a public health emergency after receiving testimony from the administration or the executive branch on the need for such emergency to continue. Madam Speaker, the third thing that this bill does is, we did the exercise of going through the process of introducing a resolution to terminate the public health emergency in the 36 Guam Legislature that failed on party-line votes. Madam Speaker, one of the reasons many of my colleagues said that they could not support that was because of the fact that there are things that needed to continue, that the administration was threatened were going to be terminated, food stamps, foods for children, supplies, the National Guard mobilization. But Madam Speaker, we saw in many jurisdictions and many legislatures who had the same difficulty with governors who overused their powers during emergencies tailored their emergency so that those programs could go forward. And so if you read in the section of this bill that deals with the resolution portion, it says "in part or in whole," which means if the legislature decides under any public health emergency going forward, they're not subject to terminating a public health emergency in its entirety, but have the opportunity to pass the resolution which keeps those programs intact that would be vital to the community. Madam Speaker, this also goes in and takes away some of the penalties that were threatened, and the fines, and the onerous penalties that were threatened to our people, and reduces them to misdemeanors, and also includes modest fines to the tune of approximately $25 per violation, bringing into reason these powers so that if there is serious violations, they can be brought up to levels of higher violations, starting at the level of misdemeanor and fines. In closing on the opening of the bill, Madam Speaker, one of the things that bothered me the most is in my discussions particularly with the healthcare community. There were many representations that our Tier 2 and our clinics and our healthcare community was not participating to the level of services and was not as important as other critical services that were receiving funding, sometimes within 15 or 20 days of dropping off their invoice. Well, those in the medical community and all of our clinics, and we all saw them, the drive-through, the tents, the nurses and doctors and people out there processing, they're equally as efficient, or sometimes more efficient than public health alone, yet they used all the resources to do this, Madam Speaker. They were not shy about it. They made it clear that they felt as though they were being left out and not compensated for the services that they were providing to the public. These are the kind of things, Madam Speaker, that would be discussed during a public hearing, should this bill pass, and God forbid, we have another public health emergency where we need to address these issues. I look forward to the testimony this afternoon, Madam Speaker, on this very critical bill. It is timely. The national public health emergency has now been terminated. We're not going to wait for another pandemic to hit to realize that some things were done great. Credit where credit's due, frontliners were awesome, a lot of agencies operated with perfection. Some, particularly the hospital, modified itself quickly to adapt. This in no way diminishes the great work that was done, but it brings into balance, Madam Speaker, and takes care of those things, glowing things and glaring things that many saw were not handled properly. This bill will fix that and give an opportunity to return the balance of power to this legislature working in coordination with the chief executive. With that, Madam Speaker, I thank you for the opportunity to open on Bill 737.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. We'll now hear from those who've signed up to testify. We have four. We'll begin with Dr. Huan Nguyen.
Thank you so much for giving the time here, but it will be fun to sit here in front of you guys. So, you know, Dr. Shae is supposed to be here, but again, he's in a C-section. But he wrote a letter, the address is concerned, and on behalf of GMA that support the Bill 737 in favor to, I hope that this body will vote that into a bill. My name is Huan Nguyen, and I think most of you know, I'm previously the chief of the pack for the governor during the pandemic, and we learned a whole lot during pandemic. And what I present today is to make sure that everyone understands that there's a power that the governor have, but it had to respect the private entity and the business on the island. This is, I'm a refugee. I come from a communist country. I believe no freedom, liberty should possibly be on the people, and we vote the governor and the senator in to serve the people. So I'm going to present something that kind of learned a lot during pandemic, and I think that we should somehow limit the power of anyone to make decisions, especially, you know, to affect the private side of how we run our business. And as a medical provider, doesn't matter what the governor say or anyone say, we will continue to support the community the best we can in a way that is safe for our provider, our medical staff, and provide the best care for the people of Guam. As you know, remember, on the first day of the first positive tests for COVID, it kind of shocked everyone. We expected to come to Guam, but we didn't expect to come that early. So I would say almost every clinic in Guam closed down. We don't know much about COVID, but at AMC, we put an announcement that we continue to open and to serve the people of Guam in order to provide, you know, care for people here, also to help our GMH, because it's going to be overwhelmed. We don't know much about it, but throughout the next few weeks, I know myself and a lot of providers and the medical staff in our clinic, we go home, but we sleep in a different side of the house. We cannot share anything with our family, because what we see, the person sitting next to us, about two feet away from us, die the next day. And that's something that you don't want to bring home to your family. So, and a few weeks later, we have the executive order to form Tier 2. That means that GMH, GMRC, they are different tier, but on the Tier 2 wishes, the big clinic, just as AMC, FHP, and SDA, we are in the order of the governor to serve the people of Guam despite the ability to pay. That means that we provide our service at no cost to anybody, and we cannot collect any single penny for everyone that walk in the front door. And then few occasions that we make a mistake, and we collect certain fee, and we only get told that you're supposed to provide service for free. And you can see on the news, everyone, that if you want to be tested, you get sick, just go to Tier 2, go to emergency room, and your service completely free. We didn't expect to last for three years. And you know, when, at the private level, we don't have any fund except our own personal fund to provide the service for the people of Guam for three years. Yes, we get provided the testing kit from Public Health to do testing for people of Guam, but again, my say is that the test kit doesn't run by itself. It needs to have the triage people, it needs to have the clinical staff, it needs to have physician to kind of determine the positive, negative, and we call the patient to notify them right away. I cannot speak on behalf of SDA or FHP, they're not here, but on behalf of AMC, we are the only private entity, that truly private, that have the ability that Public Health gives to us to do what I call an ABO testing. That means that the molecular test for COVID that will provide the result for the patient in about 15 minutes. And we have to see the patient, counsel them, make sure they're safe to go home isolated, or admit them to hospital. Like I say, a person sit two feet away from you, sometime pass away the next day. And we functioned that for three years. Many of the government leadership, when they're sick, they go through our clinic, and again, they pay zero. Do we get compensated? Absolutely zero. I think the power to be, you know, will take over any private entity, especially the healthcare. You have to understand that we will do our part, but we are not government entity. It costs a lot. The three clinic have a grant from GIDA throughout the three years, so we get paid through a grant, but not enough to survive even six months into a pandemic. But again, there's certain limits somehow that we have to do that. Testing for public health is a government entity. We do thousands of testing, just like Senator Duñez saying. We have to require report daily to Public Health on negative and positive. Okay? We have to submit the invoice every two weeks to Public Health for the entire three years. We allow to build public health at the Medicare rate that was approved federally. Out of about $600,000 that we bill, this is a government, this is an order from the governor, our $600,000 in three years, we get paid $20,000. The rest of them supposed to be our civic duty to do that. We believe that there's always have a chance of another pandemic emergency or war coming. The power to control the private sector and stand up to help people of Guam have to be balanced somewhere between the person make decision and this body. There's, we don't mind standing up as an entity for healthcare, but there should be a compensation where it clearly state to make it balanced. You know, I talked to my staff before I come today, and there's certain things that I don't mind sharing, you know, Senator Duñez and Senator Barnett have it. When I look at it, my staff cry. This is not the respect that the medical community deserve from any leadership. You know, we supposed to be in the same team. We're not in the same team. So I would ask you to somehow balance the power and cannot be repeated again. You know, I strongly believe it, because as the previous chief, I take the word back to all the major clinic here in Guam and ask them to do something to help Guam, because the promise and the verbal agreement we have have not been delivered. And I feel very responsible for what I do to the rest of my colleague by not deliver what my order to come down to them, to ask them to do certain stuff. So, again, we don't mind helping, but I think that the power to make decision, to take over the private, has to be balanced somewhere. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. We'll now hear from Heather Zoa, from Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm Heather Zona. I am the acting chief prosecutor at the Attorney General's office, and I'm just going to read my remarks. So on behalf of Attorney General Douglas Moylan and myself, I thank you for the opportunity to comment on Bill 737. The proposed bill seeks to reaffirm that citizens' fundamental constitutional rights are not abridged during declared public health emergencies. It also prohibits the creation of criminal acts or redefinition of the scope of existing criminal acts of civil violations defined by public law, as well as the imposition of fines. Now, over the past few years, we have seen stateside a number of challenges to different stay-at-home orders issued by local governments in response to COVID-19. Some, such as in Wisconsin, have been successfully challenged. Others have not been so successful, such as a church that challenged the Illinois stay-at-home order as an infringement on the First Amendment. There, the court noted that the Constitution does not compel courts to turn a blind eye to the realities of the COVID-19 crisis, and that for more than a century, the United States Supreme Court has recognized that a community has the right to protect itself against an epidemic of disease that threatens the safety of its members. Nonetheless, the judiciary always has the authority to strike down laws that use public health emergencies as a pretext for infringing on individual liberties. Courts must remain vigilant and mindful that government claims of emergency have served in the past as excuses to curtail constitutional freedoms. And this is the lesson of the Korematsu case, which addressed internment of Japanese-Americans during World War II. And I think most would agree that that was a particularly shameful part of our history as a nation. The purpose of our testimony from the Attorney General's office today is not to provide legal advice as to the constitutional issues, but to simply point out the many factors at play that ultimately may expose this bill to constitutional challenge. One consideration for the legislature is to create a right of redress for anyone whose property was taken during such events. But in the area of prosecution, we do agree that criminal liability should not be created via executive order, agency directive, or administrative rule or regulation issued or promulgated pursuant to a declaration of a state, public health emergency, or in anticipation of such emergency. This is because, as a fundamental matter, creation of laws by an entity other than the legislature violates the separation of powers of our government. The Organic Act of Guam serves the function of a constitution for Guam, and that document vests the legislative powers of the government of Guam solely in the legislative branch. This non-delegation doctrine prohibits the legislature from delegating its legislative power to another branch of government. And certainly, other branches of government do not have the power to seize that power either. So the United States Supreme Court recognized that the central judgment of the framers of the Constitution was that, quote, "within our political scheme, the separation of governmental powers into three coordinate branches is essential to the preservation of liberty," unquote. Similarly, punishment in the way of fines or penalties is something within the exclusive jurisdiction of the legislature. So for this reason, we support the bill's ban on creating extra statutory crimes and penalties outside the purview of the legislature. On behalf of Attorney General Douglas Moylan, I thank you for the opportunity to present testimony on Bill 737, and our office remains Guam's toughest law enforcers. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney General, Assistant Attorney General OZONA. Am I saying that correctly?
That's correct.
Are you the chief prosecutor?
I am. I'm the acting chief.
Acting chief prosecutor, Sidosmasi. All right, I'd like to recognize also some of my additional colleagues that have come in. Senator Chris Barnett, thank you for being here, and Senator Frank Blas, our minority leader, Sidosmasi. Okay, we'll now go to Bistra Mendiola, Ms. Mendiola.
How are they, senators? My name is Bistra Mendiola. I am resident of Cholampago, and I'm here in support of Bill 7-37COR. Some of you know me personally, some of you don't, but I would like to explain how my background really forces me and compels me to be here yet again, because that's my second time when I came to testify in front of the legislature regarding the rights of the people and certain acts that were done by the administration during COVID. So I guess I'm kind of closing down a loop, in a sense. I pretty much echo what Dr. Nguyen said when he was describing how his private clinic was forced to provide services for no just compensation. What he just described to you is what we call in any communist country, which I was born and raised in many years ago, collectivization of private property. That was a perfect example. So if you think that nowadays in the United States, anything that resembles a totalitarian state or communist state, any actions that are impossible to be done here on US soil, you just, you just heard that this actually happened not too long ago. I am probably sure to say- I am probably sure to say that it doesn't matter whether we are Democratic side of the aisle or Republican side of the aisle. When we call ourselves US citizens, we are here because of the creation of a constitution that created certain civil rights and liberties that were placed to protect the future generations from abuse of power. And as we all know, abuse of power is not only possible, but it's just happening on the daily in many jurisdictions. And I'm sad to say that we just witnessed a good example that that thing happened here. Collectivization is one thing. How about the right to practice one's religion, the freedom of assembly? That also was stricken. No congregation, even in your own private residence. What's the logic behind that? What, we're not supposed to worship God in our own home? Who gives you the authority to give that such order? That's just the second example. I, I'm not here to bash past actions, but I'm here to remind ourselves that any abuse of power happens simply because that power has been given. And unfortunately, that power was given to the governor by previous administration when they wrote the Chapter 19. And last time I was here, I actually testified why I thought that that particular law that trumped the regular public health law, I believe Chapter 19, that is the public health emergency law, that, there were some sections there that required that no one else besides public health has the right to see your medical status. And yet, here we were, being asked to present proof of vaccination. For those of you who don't remember what Chapter 19 is, this is the public health emergency law that trumped the everyday use public health law. Okay, so what happened was, okay, we were in public health emergency. Here's the new law that we're going to abide by. But yet, we broke the law yet again. I came here and I testified in this, regarding this. And I'm here again to remind you that, again, we, we are not immune from abuse of power. I don't care where it comes from. Today might be this governor, tomorrow maybe another governor. We don't know. But us as citizens who see that certain liberties and certain laws are being stricken in, in, in the name of the public good, which is, again, something that I've seen in certain Marxist literature, in the name of collective good and public good. We, we've seen atrocities happen. So I implore you, again, please, consider limiting the powers. You really, you really are the people here that need to look out for the future of our generation because we don't want anything like that to ever happen again. To know what the future holds, we need to look in the past and simply, simply take into account what happened. And it's very easy to predict future happenings, to put it in layman's terms. So yes, I plead with you, plead, consider passing this law. It is very important because, again, regardless on what faith or political beliefs you rely on in your daily, in your daily life, the Constitution is here, and the Organic Act mimics that Constitution to protect our lives and freedoms. Because once we start taking away and striking down any of those rights and freedoms, then we can no longer call ourselves democratic society or republic. That's it, we're done. We, we went to communist Russia or China time. And any immigrant that comes from certain regime like that, because, you know, Bogira wasn't the only country in the world that was under this kind of regime. Dr. Wen also saw quite a few things in his lifetime. Every single immigrant that came and decided to stay and become by choice, mind you, by choice, US citizen, we are probably, in the today modern day and age, the best defenders of that civil liberties and freedoms because we know that it could be much worse. And when we come here, we speak freely, we fight for freedom, we ensure that our children and their children will live in a free society. And if we don't speak up on this very important issue, then we cannot call ourselves US citizens because we don't believe in the Constitution. We don't believe in the preamble of the Constitution and all the laws that are here to protect us. And by the way, I, I think, maybe Mr. Fisher can correct me because, or Speaker can correct me, you guys are attorneys, but whenever a judge has something to take a look at and he doesn't have enough available facts regarding particular law, they'll go and take a look at the legislative intent on a certain law. Am I correct? Sort of, yeah. As to my best knowledge. So I think this bill, the legislative intent in the bill is written really well. And I give you kudos, Senator, because you're not sparing a single detail as to why this bill must pass. And I thank you for that. I appreciate it very much. I'm not going to hold you any, any longer. Again, I ask that you vote in favor of this bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mendola. Fred Berdalia, former chief, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon, Senators. First, I'd like to introduce myself. And I'm testifying orally in opposition to Bill 7-37COR. I just want to say I'm not working for this administration. I used to work for Governor Lou Longguero's administration as a former Director of Veterans Affairs. I used to work as the Chief of Police for Governor Calvo. And in my over 29 years of being a police officer, I worked for different administrations in emergency management at the Emergency Operations Center, especially when it comes down to the issue of government's response to a emergency. What we were responding to and what this legislation refers to also happens because of the result of the type of communications and interaction between the executive branch and the legislature during a pandemic. And I first want to first describe a little bit about my background. Again, I said I used to work for the Guam Veterans Affairs Office under Governor Lou Longguero. I was a retired Chief of Police. I was a signed corrections security specialist in the military, military police officer, US Army Reserves Naval Reserve Security. When 9/11 happened, I was also a police officer at the time. I also have done research in the areas and fields of human relations, public administration, international relations at the Naval Postgraduate School, Center of Homeland Security, University of Oklahoma, Human Relations Graduate Studies, University of Guam School of Business and Public Administration, and the Guam Community College, Federal Bureau of Investigations, Law Enforcement and Executive Development, and Asia-Pacific Center for Security Studies, and the United States Institute of Peace. One of the things that, you know, from the ground level as an emergency responder is we're getting orders from the governor. We're getting orders from the director or we're assigned an emergency operations center. And everything's about life and death matters. I'll give an example. When I was Chief of Police, a 9/11 call, a 911 call came into the office. And this was actually Governor Calvo's, like, probably third day in office. And it said a shopping center was going to blow up. We didn't know what shopping center this was. And there was a lot of thought process into, well, what do we do? Do we just go to a mall and tell everyone, close your businesses down and get out of the mall and we'll tell you later what happened so we don't want to cause panic? There's some tough questions and there's some tough responses that are going to have to take place because it's a matter of life and death. Minutes, hours, days are very vital in these, the initial portion of an emergency response. But we have a Guam Emergency Response Plan. And we've always, I'm surprised the Guam, you know, the Civil Defense and Guam Office of Homeland Security aren't here to testify because I think it's really pertinent that they've come over here and show what are the updates of the Guam Emergency Response Plan for different scenarios. Now, this pandemic was a, you know, qualified and, you know, through records and through all the lessons we learned, some of the lessons was natural. But if it was a biological attack, that would have been a different story. And we're talking about sometimes having to go to where are the resources? And this is discussed in pandemic planning or a public health type of emergency. Where would the closest resource be to get medications? They get maybe doctors and resources from the medical community. And sometimes that might be stepping on toes and might be violating some constitutional rights. But in that process, as I think the representative of the Office of Attorney General was, is are the courts for any sort of like dispute on that. And we would actually, you know, I know it's trans, it's transform in our government. We used to have an appointed Attorney General that would answer straight to the governor, you know, whenever they would make decisions, especially in an emergency situation. But now, the Attorney General is not an appointed position to the governor. It's now an elected position. And that, that sometimes poses a challenge too. But the governor still has her legal advisors, and there's supposed to be some legal review up there at Emergency Operations Center when some of these response and, and feedback of what's happening, are we completing and achieving each objective of whatever each agency is supposed to do? For this pandemic, the lead would always be public health because it dealt with pandemic. The next emergency we might have might not be anything that might have to do with a pandemic or public health. It could be a power. We were always sometimes exercising that if we have a catastrophic thing, event that happens, mass casualty event, and it happened at our power plant and all the power is out, electrical power systems are out, and then who would take the lead on that? So sometimes we just don't get, we don't, sometimes we're, we're at the mercy of what could happen maybe tomorrow or the next day on what an emergency type of situation would be. And when the governor, and I've worked for Governor Lou Longguero as, again, like I said, as Director of Veterans Affairs, my biggest experience really from that management level was working with Governor Calvo and seeing the way how he had to sometimes respond. Especially, I think there was one time we had a tsunami that was supposed to come to Guam. We actually closed all roads into Tumon because we had to evacuate from, to higher levels of, of higher ground. And sometimes you had motors and people saying, well, no, I'm going to go into Tumon and you're, and we've had some of our officers being told, you know, you're violating my constitutional rights when I can't get, and you know, I have a place to go, have a business to run. But this was an emergency situation, you know? And we've had some cases challenged. I don't know whether anyone ever remembers this, but my uncle Ricky, when he was a governor, there was a typhoon, and there was some looting. And he had the help of, I guess, sometimes US Marshals coming out, but he closed the roads, and he was challenged in court, and he lost that battle. But I really think it really comes down, boils down to the courts to resolve this. And it boils down to a real good resource of the Office of Attorney General, who should be in there. And I don't know, I, I wasn't part of the emergency response of their Emergency Operations Center when the few days of the pandemic was going on. But I would assume there would be a representative from the legislature up there at the Emergency Operations Center to be there so that they're in tune of what's going on. So that's why, I guess, you know, I just want to say, you know, out of respect too. I know the intent is, is a good intent, and there was some, you know, back and forth. I mean, I've seen some battles too, even from the national level, to see when they grounded all the planes in 9/11 and the Vice President was the only one at the White House, and he's wondering whether he's giving the order to shoot down a commercial airline, you know? And there was back and forth. I actually had the luxury to go to Aspen, Colorado, at a Homeland Security and meet some President Bush former cabinet members. And President Obama was the president at the time. And I would see the interaction of what would happen in 9/11 and what are some of the lessons learned. So there could be a lessons learned in this pandemic, actually, this pandemic response that we had. And, and even though, and now that the emergency phase of our country is over with President Biden. But I just, I just really believe that time is of the essence, that every governor needs to use that executive power. And if there's anything that, that goes outside the box, there would be always a legal representative to look at that, and there will always be court to go to to resolve that dispute. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Berdalia. Okay, I'm going to open it up now for senators. Senators, I just want to remind you, we have three hearings, and I've just been told that there's an oratorical contest set over in the Legislative Session Hall at 6:00 PM. So I'm, I'm going to have to ask you to please limit yourselves if possible. I'm going to begin with the Vice Chair, Senator Joanne Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And certainly thank you to all of you for, for being here today to provide your perspective with regards to this bill that Senator Chris Duennius has introduced. I think you will have a majority of the members of the legislature that will vote for this bill and support it, as we did during the last term. But we do have a minority number of members of our body that don't agree with you. I certainly appreciate the testimony of our former police chief. I think we understand during times of emergency that we need to organize and respond to that emergency. The bigger issue is when an emergency continues for as long as a pandemic did. I mean, we all hoped, maybe in a matter of months at the most, that we would get back to some normalcy, and that was not the case. I mean, we ended up with several years of a pandemic that impacted our lives. Understandable, the priority was to save as many of our people from becoming ill and certainly reduce the numbers of those that passed away. And unfortunately, we lost members of our community, many of us. I don't think there's anyone here that does not know or was related to someone that died as a result of COVID. But the issue is, when we deal with these situations, yes, we, we agree that the governor should have emergency authority to respond. But after a period of time, then we believe, at least I certainly do, a number of us do, the majority of members of the last legislature did. And I'm certainly fairly confident the majority of members of this legislature will agree. At some point, then, we need to sit down and have the input of the people that are governed to say what it is they want to do. And we are very strong advocates of that. I know Senator Chris Duennius was the most vocal in his position last year. And I support very much this bill. But I think that's where the challenge is. I mean, too much power in the hands of anyone is a very dangerous thing. You see people change when they have power. And a lot of people don't use it very responsibly, even though it's very temporary. But people change. I mean, Dr. Wen, you, we certainly appreciate the contributions you made because a lot of us listened to what you had to say and took advice and direction that you and those in the medical community had to address our, our personal safety. And I'm very saddened to hear from your testimony that you have only been compensated such a small amount of the work that you and your staff and many others in the medical community provided to, to our people. That's very disturbing because the intent of the, especially the federal pandemic funds should have been and should go to those type of services. I think we all see a lot of that money was spent on many things. We don't even know how that money, how the millions of dollars of pandemic money were spent. But I think we would all agree the priority should have gone to all of those of you that provided medical support and medical care. So it's very disturbing to hear that such a small percentage of barely $20,000 has been compensated to your clinic. And yet, you're saying that just your clinic alone provided over $600,000 worth of service.
The 600,000 is for testing.
Okay.
But for us to see sick patient, like you check in and you have a cough and a fever, we cannot charge. So basically, everyone walk in, we have to see. So sometime we have to kind of close a whole section of the clinic just because those room, once the patient get in, they get contaminated. You cannot put another patient in there. So you only use those room for isolation only.
Was any other type of financial support provided to your clinic or any of the other clinics you're aware to offset the impacts, the time and, and money resources that your private clinics invested in providing this assistance to the community?
You know, we have two grant from GIDA for small business. The first one, I think, 500,000 in the six months into the pandemic. And the other one, I think, 250 from the Lieutenant Governor for partial payment of service. But that's only two payment we received over three years. Again, you know, Again, you know, it was, quote to me, that it's our civic duty to provide a service. And I don't think compensation is in the equation of, in the order that we're giving to the tier two. You know, basically, we have to see everyone for free.
Well, I appreciate you enlightening us with regards to that because many of us were not aware. I know our speaker is concerned about time, but I mean, I think it's a very important thing to bring to light. Colleagues, the odds of this bill passing are fairly good. If the governor vetoes it, then that's the question. I think you need to look at members of the body that don't agree that this is a democratic process and that we should have the input of the public. I mean, time and time again, we failed override last year. And so I think you need to look at the members of this legislature that don't support the rights of our people to be engaged in their own governance process. That's the challenge. This bill will easily pass. But you really need to take a good look in the public of those that, for whatever reason, I don't understand it. I've worked for two governors in my life, and while I appreciate the work that they do and have tremendous respect for them, otherwise I never would have worked for them. I don't believe this, I don't know if it's our colonial history, I don't know what it is, because people fear or they give in so easily. And that I don't understand at all, especially elected officials. It's disheartening to see it. But we see it happen time and time again. You saw it happen in the last legislature. Odds are fairly good you'll see it happen in this legislature. So that's really the message that needs to go out is the few, the select few in this legislature that acquiesce to the administration and the acquiesce to the abuse of power upon our own people. That's what's really disturbing, our own people. So I hope you continue to be vocal. I appreciate your input. And I don't disagree with the point the police chief has brought forth, but I said I can understand in moments of emergency. But when that emergency extends over its long period of time, then definitely the people that are governed have the right to have a say in how they choose to be governed. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to ask questions and comment.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Brown. The sponsor of the bill, Senator Duennius.
Chief Duennius, Madam Chair, and Dr. Wen, thank you for your testimony. Bistra, thank you once again, and to the attorney general, thank you for the comments that you provided. Fred, I wanted to say that I respect your presentation. I want to make it clear, as you've noted, you've worked for two governors. This bill is not about any governor. This is about the governor, not Governor Calvo, not Governor Leon Garros, not Governor Gutierrez. It is about the governor, the administration, the executive branch. Did you read the bill thoroughly, Fred?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so I just want, for the purposes, because I just have two questions. Did you read Section 4, 19405B, Chapter 19, Title 10, Guam Code annotated? And it reads as follows. "B, automatic termination, notwithstanding any of the provision of law in this chapter, the declaration of state of public health emergency shall be terminated automatically after 30 days unless renewed," and what we changed was, "imago laetargum," obviously now it's "maga haga," "to a legislature under the same standard and procedure set forth in this article. Any such renewal shall also be terminated automatically after 30 days unless renewed by," once again, we line through the governor and we put the legislature, "under the same standards and procedures set forth in this article." Do you realize that that's the actual public law right now? Because what you described in terms of your testimony on responding to the mall's going to blow up or the emergency of a typhoon or the emergency of a tidal wave or tsunami are all actions that are, obviously, we know of natural disasters that are going to happen in the moment. And do you think the wisdom of how this was constructed on the 30 days recognized that the governor has to have a certain amount of ability and maneuverability? But even this, the governor operated on her because she kept extending the public health emergency, but what we want is transparency. Do you think that wisdom was baked into this public law in the beginning?
Well, I think, you know, in the context, because we're talking about this particular emergency we've been through was a pandemic emergency. A lot of misinformation was out in the public that, you know, that there was, well, first of all, in the beginning, there was no vaccination. There was no vaccines that came. That first initial portion before the emergency, there were some meetings, there were some conferences on reviewing the pandemic plan because we were hearing things of what happened in China. So when people were saying there's no playbook, yes, there was a playbook. There was a pandemic plan that was initiated, that was been discussed since 2006. But the thing about it is we can have a plan, a pandemic plan on response and how we're going to mitigate it, but sometimes all of a sudden, things don't go as planned. And sometimes there are different variables in this. And a lot of the things that were going on in the beginning of the pandemic is that when the vaccines started coming out, of course, you know, this was the case. My own sister, who is a doctor, who was part of the front line at GMH, were part of getting the vaccinations, Operation Warp Speed by President Trump. But the thing about it, all state governors, you know, and to include Governor Lou, were assumed to be talking to each other and giving the public notice what's going on, what are the status. And I would assume too that there would be a representative of the legislature who would be there at the Emergency Operations Center constantly.
So Fred, the speaker is indicating that we have to move along because we have a heavy schedule. I want to narrow this question.
Yeah.
This was written in the wisdom of the pandemic plan. Are you saying then you don't think that the legislature, because why should we be up at civil defense? We have a house, we have a co-equal branch of government. You're saying then, as written, you don't believe the governor should have to report to the legislature and say, this is what's going on with the pandemic plan? Things have changed? This is why I need the 30-day extension? Even when the law calls for that termination?
I say, I say that the governor should have a link to the legislature, and that's the speaker. There's a succession, a line of succession. If something ever happened to the governor or to the lieutenant governor, the speaker comes first. There is a succession of what happens in our government, right? Even though there are two branches, there's a succession. But I think what's most important, as I highlighted in my testimony, is that we have legal counsel there, and you have a court mechanism, which the representative of the office attorney general has mentioned. And I think the legislature did take, there were some challenges to the executive orders of the governor, but that happened in other states too during the pandemic emergencies.
So in Section 5, what we're amending in terms of the termination in whole or in part, do you think the wisdom of this drafting of this legislation was the recognition that the legislature had the power to terminate it? Doesn't, isn't that institutionalized already here? Why would that be there if we were just supposed to sit back and let the governor do whatever the governor wants to do?
Well, you know, the intent of that public law, I haven't really looked at the intent of how that, the current public law on that was, right? I didn't look at that, the intent of that public law. But I would assume, again, because I, but I read it, that the legislature wants a good relationship with the executive branch and coordinated effort, especially when our community is at risk to harm for any kind of threat. This time it's a pandemic. This time it's a biological event. Next time it may be a radiological event where people are moving around, and that's a little bit more challenging too. So there's, but at the same time, I can understand even what Senator Joanne Brown said about the duration of this, just how long, how it goes, right? How long goes and when it's time to say, things are stable now and the community, we can go back to normal operations. But I assume the governor was communicating with other state governors.
Well, Fred, we just have a difference. I believe good communication is two co-equal branches of power operating independently. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Senator Duennius, Senator Caneta?
None at this time.
Thank you so much. Senator Fisher.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I was, Chief Bredal, I was listening intently to what you were saying, and the idea of ceding power to the executive branch is just anathema. As Senator Duennius observed, we're co-equal, and we're not going to give up any of our power to the legislature. That would be inappropriate, and it's just, it's not going to happen. I fully support this bill. This bill does nothing more than recite our constitutional rights. But Chief, I'd like to kind of stick with you, and I'd like to get your comment on this, this, this is a quotation that Dr. Franklin sent to the Pennsylvania Assembly 240 years ago, I guess. He said, "Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." What do you think of that?
Thank you. Well, you know, Benjamin Franklin, you know, had a good relationship with George Washington. And I believe that at the time--
But not with King George.
Well, not with King George, but he had a good relationship with George Washington, right? The first president of the United States. And I believe in the context of Benjamin Franklin, my analysis and my feelings on what he said is, yes, there's always a risk to our democracy. There's always a risk to the threat of our government moving from a democracy to a totalitarian government. There's always a risk, the January 6th, the January 6th event that happened at the Capitol Building on that election, that's the talk of what's going on right now. And some of these kind of things that are happening about, you know--
I'm sorry, sir, I don't understand that line of thinking. How did you tie January 6th into this?
Well, jet, well, sometimes there's, again, like I said, there's events in America besides Franklin's quote at that time, that there's threat to liberty.
Are you suggesting that the events of January 6th might have required the United States to restrict civil liberties? I hope not.
Well, what I'm saying is that--
That was an attempt--
They have to bring, they have to, they have to secure the Capitol, okay?
That was an attempt to overthrow the government of the United States of America. This is an attempt to make sure that never happens again. Again, the speaker wants us to move on. Okay. And then, Mrs. Ona, if I could ask you a question. I've looked at, I've looked at your written testimony. Could you point out the constitutional problem you suspect might lurk within this bill? You say that one consideration for the legislature is to create a right of redress for anyone whose property was taken during such events. That already exists and standing exists within the Fifth Amendment to the United States Constitution. What is it about this bill that drives you to think that there is a hyper-Fifth Amendment right, I suppose?
Thank you, Senator. I don't actually, I don't believe that anything in my testimony suggested there's a hyper-Fifth Amendment right. But what I was suggesting is that if, dealing with the actual issues that arose during this particular pandemic, that the legislature is always empowered to create a tribunal or some other mechanism to speed up that process. So to the extent, I mean, you have folks that are testifying here today--
Well, all that's within the framework of the Constitution. You would agree.
Absolutely. Well, it is within the framework of the Constitution that they're entitled to that. But in terms of the mechanism for speeding up the process, I think the legislature has the power to do that. I think the legislature has the power to create that mechanism, whether it's a tribunal, a claims process that is specifically addressed towards those types of injuries, really. I think the legislature has that ability to do that. It doesn't have to, obviously.
Can you lay, well, do you, can you lay your finger on a particular constitutional right or constitutional provision which might be being violated by this law? I can't discover one inside the law.
Oh, I'm not--
I mean, that's what you said--
I'm not, what I'm saying is that there are constitutional issues that come up because I'm looking more at what the federal courts have done when they've been addressing these issues specifically related to the legality of stay-at-home orders, things like the First Amendment challenge with respect to attending religious services and things like that. My point is that the cases, if we look at them, that have addressed these issues stateside have, quite frankly, been all over the map.
Yeah, I mean, this issue's been bubbling since 1905 with the Jacobson case.
Absolutely. And those cases have looked at the Jacobson case, and they're still all over the map. And so that's just sort of the point. I mean, I'm, I'm here as the chief prosecutor, so I'm looking at the prosecution piece of it, which is with respect to these misdemeanors and other things that I think would be challenged based on the fact that they were not created by the legislature, they're created differently. But my point is really that, and I, and I think based on the legislative history that's here, that Senators, Senator Duennius is well aware of these challenges because when we're talking about restricting people's constitutional rights, we always look at, well, how are those interpreted in, Guam is not the only jurisdiction that had these challenges. And it's unfortunate, but, so to that extent, we have to look at, how are these things addressed in different jurisdictions? And I think they're all over the map. That's, that's my point.
Well, it's going to depend on the issue. I mean, there's, a lot of water's gone under the bridge. It's all over the map. You're exactly correct.
Absolutely.
And it's going to remain unresolved since the emergency is over. But I just have to say, just from my limited experience right now, that because you put in the word constitutional, some members of this body are going to grab that as a reason not to support the bill, which is entirely not what you are saying.
Well, that's sort of an ironic, that would be ironic, Senator, because the whole bill, from what I can see, is designed to remedy these constitutional violations. So, but in order to remedy them and in order to prepare the way for the bill to move forward, I mean, I think we have to frame it in terms of the word constitution because that's exactly what the bill is designed to address.
Boy, I'm going to play that quote back maybe later in the floor. Okay, and then I'm going to, one more question. Chief, it's back to you again. You know, when we give up, when we give up one liberty because we think we're protecting the entire framework, we're all, we are often going to lose all of it. And if you would like to know the truth of that, I think you should talk to Bistra Mendiola. She has personal experience of what it's like to live in a totalitarian regime. And just, we cannot, we cannot give up our liberties. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Lujan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, panel. You know, Chief, you were saying that, yeah, there are circumstances that, of course, that there are times that people will step on people's constitutional rights. And that's exactly what this bill is trying to clarify, that you not infringe in people's constitutional rights. And we understand, again, in emergencies situations, as you had mentioned, that you had responded to in the past where it's imminent danger and things of that nature, you don't know where things are at, that things have to be, again, in a different way, in a different But, you know, just, just short story, I mean, the 14, I was stuck in the Philippines for 14 months during the pandemic, just as it hit. Supposed to be a democracy, but there's nothing about Duterte that's pretty democratic. And as I saw what was going on, people being fined and thrown into jail, there were no, I mean, I was watching it, listening to the radio and watching the news, what's happening here in Guam? You were having, you know, the vaccines. We had nothing at that point, but people were being thrown in jail and fined and things like that. I said, are you, are you going to prevent people from catching COVID when you're throwing them in jail? It wasn't happening here, but what, the actions that were, that were happening came pretty close, pretty close to, to what Bistra had described and Doc had described in living in places, yeah, in living in places that were, you know, democracy was a, was a dream. And, and so I said, man, boy, do I love America. Because I didn't, I wasn't living in America and didn't have access to, to my rights. Certain people couldn't go out at certain ages, young and old, would be thrown in jail or be fined. And so, and I, as I, as I saw that and read what was happening here, there's a lot of similarities. And Chief, you know, you were saying about the, the, the governor having legal counsel and advice, and I understand that, but their legal counsel is not a fourth branch of government as well. This is the branch of government, this is the only branch of government that makes laws. This is the only branch of government that makes laws. The only branch of government that makes laws. They create laws. The executive branch executes those laws and the judiciary interprets those laws. And I'm in 100% support of this bill because I saw from afar what you lived, you guys lived. I lived it for 14 months. And I sure as heck would not want us to ever see us going down that road, ever. I mean, I can understand the first few days or maybe 30 days, something like that, but it extended. I came back and I was still, 14 months later, we were still, I mean, I don't think there was ever an official lifting. We just assumed, we just assumed that we're no longer in a pandemic. It's an assumption. I don't think it was ever officially lifted. And I don't see, I don't see why the executive branch, whoever it may be, that couldn't come down and collaborate with this, with this body, with this body to get, I mean, imagine how much more can be done. I mean, our colleague here challenged some of the executive order and won in court, did you not? No? Little bit, little bit. So, again, with that being said, Dr. Wen, thank you for what you have done. And I know you had said that, you know, you had made commitments to some of your colleagues and you were unable to make good in those commitments. I'm sorry for that, but I'm sure you were given the word that, that, I mean, you were given the word and your word was good, but because they didn't, they didn't do well in their word, your word became ungood. Is that correct? Sorry, but thank you for, again, for what you've done. And you seen that, I mean, you were the person up front doing all these. And I just say that it, what I saw was we came very close, if not right, to the edge of martial law. Am I correct in that? Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Lujan. Senator Taitikui?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'll try and make this short. You know, this, this bill, basically what it does, the strength on this bill is very simple. It improves transparency, you know. It also improves the trust in the people, the people's trust. It creates inherent checks and balances that are needed on an executive order. You know, don't get me wrong. You know, the executive orders can be a viable tool in a case of a public emergency. But they do have weaknesses. And I think that the ability for the governor to, you know, have this and knowing that there are a limited duration, potential for abuse, lack of enforcement in some areas, it has to be adjusted. Some bills that are out there are not perfect. What we're trying to do is make it a better, better rules and regulations in governing the, any kind of, you know, executive order that the governor puts out. It's just about transparency. So, thank you and for being here and testifying today. Bistra, it's always good to see you. Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sis Massey, Senator Taitikui, Senator Sinicalis.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. I agree with all of you. You're all right. Just get enough votes and it'll pass, either way. Thank you, Doc, for your testimony. I too, I'm a businessman too, and I was frustrated through the whole ordeal. And I can, you know, respect what you're talking about, even you, Ms. Bistra. Yeah, and also Chief Fred. You know, I can understand it from a law enforcement standpoint and also from a military standpoint, how critical it is to act sometimes, you know. But I do agree with my colleague down there, and I will support this bill. I think it's a good bill. And I don't like it when people's liberties get infringed upon. So, but thank you for your, for your testimony, all of you. And we'll see where it goes from here. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Sinicalis. Senator Barnett?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd just like to thank the panel for showing up to testify. Gave me some flashbacks to the pandemic. And also, thank you, Doc, for your testimony. It was very enlightening. I wasn't aware that clinics have not been paid in full yet. And that's something I will definitely follow up on. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Minority Leader, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you for the panel for being here. Mr. Verdale, I'd like to basically provide this question to you. With regard to, I guess the question is, what specifically are you in opposition of this bill? Why, I listened to your testimony, couldn't find any opposition.
I just, I had said earlier previously, there's a mechanism, you know, that whenever, whenever there's a conflict of the executive order, you have a court system for the legislature, any members of the legislature to go to court. And it can be resolved in a court, in a matter of court, whether the executive order, or any citizen. I believe it was mentioned, I think, whether Senator, whether Senator Fisher at that time, you know, challenged the executive order, whether there's any litigation. But any citizen can bring up litigation against the governor if they believe their constitutional rights were infringed upon. So there's a mechanism on that.
Okay, so then I guess, I'll frame the question in this way. Do you think that, in your experience in the many places that you've worked in, then when you, when you're running an emergency operation and you constantly renew it, when does an emergency stop becoming an emergency?
Well, if we're talking about, you know, because again, like I said, different, there are different circumstances. I mean, we're talking about biological event. This pandemic had to do with a biological agent, right? And that's a very complex situation. Again, the lead is public health, right? And according to, if they were following the plan, constantly get feedback from public health and also from GMH about the infection, you know, the infection spread. How effective are they flattening the curve? We heard that terminology, right? My mom used to be in public health. She's a longtime public health nurse before she became the nursing director at GMH. And she was one of the first ones getting vaccinated. And she, and anytime there was some kind of outbreak, sometimes that outbreak won't be two days or three days. There'll be a timeline. I mean, I think prior to the pandemic, our island suffered from some sort of dengue fever. There was a pat, there was an emergency response to go and clear some of these areas. So again, Senator, what I would just say again is, it just depends, you know, especially when it's a public health outbreak. I mean, the ones who have the most knowledge on that, about what timelines we can look at, are public health leadership.
So you're really not adverse to being able to have a periodic review of whether or not this emergency could continue to exist, provided that there are certain parameters and there are certain things that continue to occur or haven't been resolved?
Yeah, I believe I stated there should be communications with the governor and the Speaker of the legislature or representative of the legislature. There should always be in communications, you know, about what's, what's the situation? What's the update right now where this emergency?
Of which this bill intends to provide.
This bill provides that?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Senator Blas. We have one more person to testify. I'm going to allow it if it can be just kept below five minutes, please. We have other bills we have to move on to. Thank you, Mr. Leon Guerrero. You are recognized.
I apologize for my late entry into this. I was working on my yard, listening to the testimony and felt I had to come here to testify. Lord Acton famously stated, "Power corrupts, absolute power corrupts absolutely." And we saw that very clearly on a weekly, monthly basis during the pandemic. Back in 2020, I was out here protesting when the governor sent down bills where we were going to put bounties on our citizens, where we were going to encourage citizens to report, friends, neighbors, family, and coworkers who gathered in groups of 10 or more. I was out there protesting. And a lot of members of the 36th Legislature, when I tried to approach them in the parking lot, ran. They did not want to talk to me about that. And when the governor instituted pay raises, like Fred says, you can sue her. I did. I'm the only person that sued the governor over the roadblocks. And at the time, the roadblocks were first installed, all we heard out of a number of senators in the 36th was the equivalent of the hearts and flowers, we, prayers and hearts and prayers that we hear after every mass shooting, including the last three mass shootings that have taken place today. And all we heard out of politicians was our prayers and, you know. That's not enough. We need this legislature to do the common sense thing and pass this bill because under this dictatorial power the governor assumed on this emergency, when she stood before the Guam Medical Association and told them, "You have no say." And at press conference after press conference, when the governor's office was muting people, they were asking questions that the governor did not want to hear. That is why this body needs to pass unanimously this bill so that we can be sure that the people's house, the elected, the people we elect to represent us in this sacred hall have the power to periodically review the state of emergency and to make sure that it is emergency. I could go back to the 19th floor and all the abuse that took place there. I could go back to where businesses were having their sanitizing supplies confiscated while politically well-connected insiders with no business license selling personal safety gear or selling medicines or disinfectants were free to continue to sell that. When we were spending millions of dollars disinfecting empty schools for the benefit of contractors, this is where this body should have had the power to say, "No, that does not make sense." And that is not a wise use of public funds. And I'm thinking about all the pandemics and emergencies that are going to become. Because this world has changed. No longer do we have the white picket fence and the Cleaver family lifestyle. We have a fractured economy that is still circling the drain and will not come back for three to five years. The pandemic spending is over. We cannot depend on billions of dollars from the federal government, even if we have another pandemic, because we have war on the horizon. So we are looking at a series of pandemics, a series of financial, a series of natural emergencies that are going to be hitting this island. And we can no longer afford, as a people, to have one person sit there and make all the decisions for all of us without input from this body, without oversight from this body. I'm pleased to see Bistra here. I met her because she's the only other person in this room that was out there protesting at the time the governor was wanting to put a bounty on the heads of our residents. So I'm glad, I'm glad to see her here. So what we're looking at here through this legislation, it's a common sense piece of legislation. It is a piece of legislation that enforces oversight on the executive branch by the body that has the power to hold oversight over the executive branch. I find it odd that we have to pass laws forcing the government to follow open government law. We have to pass laws to force the government to follow Freedom of Information Acts that already exist. And we already have laws in the pandemic law. And we need to pass this law to make sure that all branches of government have equal power as the way this government was set up. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Leon Guerrero. The sponsor of the bill may now close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a few comments. Ken, keep up the fight. Thank you for coming today, Mr. Leon Guerrero, to once again put on the record what you've been fighting for, for many, many years now. Dr. Wen, I think it's an absolute crime that you haven't been paid and any other clinic that hasn't been paid for the services rendered. I understand that you're a tier two and it's your civic duty. But with over $240 million sitting in the bank right now, it is a crime to think that it would be hard to cut a check to you for $610,000, with millions of dollars in the bank for you doing your civic duty and doing it well and serving our public and saving lives as a tier two institution, even for those I disagree with. Thank you, Chief, for coming out and expressing yourself. Madam Speaker, as I close, I'm going to find it hard on the floor to have any argument, and I'm glad Senator Fisher put this out, to have any argument that reinstating the constitutional rights of the people of Guam within a law would constitute any violation of the Constitution. We are the lawmaking body. And I pray that our colleagues will see the wisdom in this bill. And I thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing it to be heard. Sis Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Duenias. There being no additional individuals to present testimony, this committee will consider Bill Number 7-37 COR duly heard. Sis Massey Torres. We'll now move on to the next agenda item. That is Bill Number 79-37 COR, introduced by Senator Tom Fisher. I ask him to introduce the bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. It's pretty straightforward what we're doing. And the origin of this bill was actually the chief of police, Steve Ignacio, conversation. He said that he had hoped to get this one in the 36th, but didn't happen. What this does is it raises the floor on punishment in the commission of a felony. If you use a deadly weapon, not any deadly weapon rather, a firearm as defined under Guam law, the punishment, as opposed to being 5 to 25, is going to be 10 to 25. I think this bill is necessary because gun violence on the island, particularly with the flow of crystal meth, is doing nothing but increasing. And we've got to take steps towards solving this problem. Granted, this is a small step, but it is a step. And if you're going to brand a shagun in somebody's face, I don't care whether or not you use it, the person's going to feel like their life is slipping away from them. And it's going to cause a traumatic and specific injury that almost certainly will last the rest of a person's life. And so I'd ask my colleagues to support it, and I welcome on hearing testimony. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. For the record, I'd like to just again acknowledge the presence of our vice chair, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Duane Sinicalis, Senator Telot Taitikui, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Tom Fisher, Senator Jesse Lujan, Senator Frank Blas, Senator Chris Duenias, and Senator Roy Canata. Sis Massey colleagues. All right, we'll open it now for testimony. There are two signed up. Peter Santos, you may begin.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker, and also all the esteemed members of the committee. I came here to testify in support, actually, of this measure. It is part of a special allegation that already exists. It enhances it. It is a very powerful tool, a very powerful negotiation tool for prosecution. And as Senator Fisher has stated, we have been seeing a rash of crime on Guam that involves firearms. And it's very scary. And as a citizen and as a parent, I agree that there needs to be some harsher punishment for folks who would willfully use a firearm in the commission of a felony. But I also come to testify to ask a little caution as well. Not in the passage of the bill, but just to air out a concern that I have. So I was a former prosecutor. I'm now a defense attorney. And even when I was a prosecutor, but now more so as a defense attorney, I've had at least five cases where a firearm was used and in a different context, context of self-defense. And needless to say, there, the investigation by law enforcement was wanting. The decision-making and the discretion used by prosecution was also wanting. and the discretion used by prosecution was also wanting. And so in those cases where someone used a firearm in their defense, and then they got prosecuted, so that, I am a firearms owner. I am a very staunch Second Amendment supporter. But it gives me pause, and I shouldn't have to have pause because when I think about, will I get prosecuted because the cops didn't investigate it right? And the prosecution, you know, bless their heart, they're trying their best, but it's a struggle. But that's the only thing that gives me pause, is that I don't want to end up on the opposite side of that special allegation when I was trying to defend my family and the cops got it wrong and the prosecution got it wrong. I had a trial just a couple months ago, and it was involving someone who actually shot someone. And it went all the way to trial, and it was acquitted on self-defense. But there are other castle doctrine-type situations that have happened that I've been involved in, in defending. And again, I disagree with the way the investigation was handled and the way the prosecution was handled. Now, of course, I'm going to disagree, right, because I'm a defense attorney, but I try to be objective, and I just think there is an issue that could potentially be created by having this power. But I do support the bill in its intent and in what it's about to address or what it's trying to address. And as a family man and as a parent of small children and a resident of this island and a gun owner, I support this measure.
Thank you, Attorney Santes. Assistant AG or Deputy AG, Zona?
The acting chief prosecutor, yeah.
Thank you.
Heather Zona. So I'm going to read my remarks again. So on behalf of Attorney General Douglas Moylan and myself, I'm thanking you for the opportunity to comment on Bill 7937. The proposed bill suggests changes to a sentencing enhancement in the law, and as the law currently stands, when someone commits a felony and possesses or uses a deadly weapon in the commission of that felony, that defendant must be sentenced to an additional term of five to 25 years in addition to whatever the sentence would be for the underlying felony. This is a large range, and it's designed so that the sentencing judge can consider a variety of factors to determine the appropriate sentence. This is because different crimes have different actors, some who have long records such that the law anticipates they will be punished more harshly. Similarly, not all deadly weapons are created equally. The statute defines deadly weapon as any firearm or other weapon, device, instrument, material, or substance, whether animate or inanimate, which in the manner it is used or is intended to be used, is known to the defendant to be capable of producing death or serious bodily injury. The manner in which a weapon, device, instrument, material, or substance is used and the defendant's knowledge determines whether an object is a deadly weapon. And again, the sentencing judge has the ability to take these factors into account, which is why there's such a large range in this enhancement. Bill 7937 would have a separate category of enhancement where the deadly weapon is a firearm and would essentially start that enhancement at 10 years rather than five. Now, to be clear, we are not discussing penalties for law-abiding people who lawfully own and possess firearms. We're talking about criminals who use firearms in the commission of crimes. All too often firearms play a deadly role in family violence. In fact, firearm homicides are on the rise nationally. In, excuse me, 2022, the New England Journal of Medicine noted that firearm homicides are the leading cause of death among children. And all too often guns are falling into the wrong hands. Firearms have become currency among criminals and pose a safety risk for law enforcement. Police pull over a car for a traffic violation and find unregistered guns in the car, and the individual has no right to have the gun. Maybe the individual is a felon and is not allowed to have guns, or he or she is on pretrial release and is not allowed to have guns. And it's no secret that where there are drugs, too often there also are guns. Drug houses are raided and guns are found. We see these stories on the stateside news every day. And sadly, here on Guam, we're seeing those same trends. Attorney General Moylan supports this bill because he supports harsher penalties, especially where a firearm is involved in the commission of a crime. Harsher penalties are one way to push back against the tide of crime that has plagued our island for too long. The safety of our citizens is of paramount importance, and we want people to feel safe. We want them to know that criminals who use firearms to commit crimes will be held accountable. This bill sends a strong message to criminals that we take crime seriously, and we will deal harshly with anyone who commits a crime with a firearm. So on behalf of Attorney General Douglas Moylan, I thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill. And again, the office of the Attorney General remains Guam's toughest law enforcers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Acting Chief Prosecutor Zona. So I'm taking it from the two of you's testimony that you both read this to be alternate to the current additional five to 25. They use this instead if it's a deadly weapon, the 10 to 25, right? Not on top of the five to 25?
Correct. Well, it carves out firearm as a particular type of deadly weapon, and it starts the floor at 10.
Okay. Thank you. All right, sponsor of the bill, you may proceed.
Thank you. I'm anxious to hear from my colleagues.
Thank you. Vice Chair, Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, it's unfortunate that our public continues to feel unsafe, probably in certainly my time living on Guam. This is the most uncomfortable I've ever been, and that's something that many of our family and friends and residents in this community feel. They feel very unsafe. I mean, crime continues to be a growing problem, and unfortunately, it's, we have to, and I do support this bill. I support this bill because I think unfortunately, because we have members of our community, they're not responsible citizens and bring harm to others, that there should be consequence to it because I don't know any other way. People argue, oh, we can't, the harder you push, the more resistance you're going to get. It's not going to resolve the issue. But at the same time, we almost have become the land of the lawless, and it's very disturbing every day, every single day. We see it in the news. If you're not directly affected by it, you hear about it, of the constant abuse of criminals in our community that continue to harm law-abiding citizens, citizens that get up every day, go to work, and live responsible lives. And instead of, our people sending the direction, criminals are out there abusing the system, and they're the ones bringing continued harm to our people. So I certainly support this legislation. I don't know if it's going to stop someone from committing a crime with a gun, but at least they'll know that if they do, they're going to pay the price for it. And I think a lot of our people feel that way. I think our people are fed up with the amount of crime that continues to grow and the lack of safety that we don't feel within our own homes and within our community. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Siniklis?
Thank you for your testimony. I do agree with the bill. I support it. Just to echo her sentiments, our people are frustrated. I have nothing further. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Senator Taitigui?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. To the Attorney General's Office with regarding this bill and, you know, leaving, many times we hear, I'm surprised the judicial's not here because sometimes they would chime in, like, leave it up to the judge because the circumstances that surround the situation. But this bill in particular is just for those who already have a conviction or who've, okay, so it's for anyone regardless?
No, it's for anybody who, there are a couple of things. It's really, you need to provide the person with notice that this is a crime in which there's a firearm involved, it's a deadly weapon. So for anybody who has that crime and is found guilty or enters a plea, and the special allegation is still there, if it's a firearm-related crime, so they've used a firearm in it, they're going to get whatever they get for their underlying felony, and then on top of that, they will get at least 10 years. Now, that's just how the statute is built up. There's no discretion in terms of that 10 years because the legislature under this bill would start it, start it out at that number of years. So it would start with 10 years. Now, that would not prevent a judge from going all the way up to 25 years. But the floor is 10 years, the ceiling is 25, just for that additional act of having used a firearm.
If I may add?
As you, yes?
Sorry. Also, it's discretionary. The prosecutor's office doesn't have to add the special allegation. They could choose not to include the special allegation. So it's not like every crime that has a firearm has to include the special allegation.
Do you concur with that?
Sure, we always have discretion on what to charge.
Okay. So my next question, since you prepared your testimony for this one, what other jurisdictions have this type of penalty?
I'm not actually sure of all the jurisdictions that have this kind of penalty. Usually, usually the crime, like I know in California, the crime itself is having the firearm with the particular crime, whatever it is. So it's already built into the statute in terms of the particular crime. There isn't like a separate enhancement, but there are always sentencing enhancements for different things that happen, right? So in California, for example, there are sentencing enhancements depending on if it's your third strike, if it's, how many times have you been involved in this kind of crime? What is your victim like? Is your victim an elderly person? Is your victim, in California, actually, if you're a woman for certain kinds of crimes, that will enhance your sentence. So they're, they're out there. They're, I think that what you'll find is that in other jurisdictions, California and New York in particular, that I can think of, they have a more robust set of enhancements for sentencing. And actually, their sentencing is, tends to be a lot more complicated because they deal with things like the three-strike rule. And so the sentencing guidelines, the sentencing parameters vary depending on where you are on your path. If you're in your third strike, you're going to get a different sentencing enhancement.
Guam has a three-strike rule, doesn't it? I mean, and we do have some legislation that was introduced, I think, a couple years, a couple terms ago with regarding, you know, the first strike, you get this amount of term in your, in your sentence, the second, the third, but that could be, no, you know what I'm thinking of? That's regarding sexual abuse.
And family violence also.
So, yeah, but, so there are those three-strike processes for firearms in other jurisdictions, is what you're saying?
I'm not sure specifically about firearms in other jurisdictions, but I do know that California, the strikes have to do with the type of felony that you're charged with. It's not necessarily whether your felony involves a gun, although your felony could involve a gun. It has to do with how many felonies you're charged with and which qualify for a strike.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I wish we knew more about the other jurisdictions, you know, as we implement laws like this and find out if it's actually worked in those other jurisdictions or not. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Taitigui. Senator Luhon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, panel. You know, it's just real short, it's just a sad state of affairs that we have come to this, to this point. I guess we're not quite the paradise island that we once were. You know, I just, I, we just finished hearing the bill in regards to the declaration, the state declaration, actually, by the governor. But I hope in this instance, because I'm sure one of the contributing factors to, to the creation of this bill is the fact that we have a big meth problem out here, and I'm sure, you know, a lot of the crimes that are committed and firearms are used in the commission of that crime, which probably 100% has to do with, with drugs and meth. And so that being said, I hope and pray that the governor's is watching and listening and actually proclaim, proclaim a state emergency on the meth situation here in Guam and provide all the resources to combat that. And again, the introduction of this bill is much needed right now, but again, it states our state of our island at this, at this point, and it's sad. And again, we're looking at the enhancement of tourism and military buildup and things of that nature. Again, alongside that is, is our crime rate is really high, and that's real sad. That being said, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Luhon. Senator Duñez?
Sisus Massey. Madam Chair, I certainly am in full support of Bill 7937 and commend the author for the introduction. Thank you to the Acting Chief Prosecutor Zona for being here and valuable testimony. And thank you also, you know, to Pete, you know, your advocacy, given the fact that, you know, you're in a position to defend, and I like your testimony in terms of, you know, what we need to keep talking about is good investigations and making sure that our law enforcement, Attorney General's Office, you know, tough on crime, but also the ability to have enough officers to do good investigations and to provide that when these enhancements and these, you know, sentences are put forward, you know, the teeth behind it really is a good investigation, but the teeth now is the law. And as my good colleague Senator Luhon was mentioning, we know now with the meth problem, every time you see the arrest, 90% of the time, the accompanying of the methamphetamine as well as paraphernalia is a gun. And so we know that that danger exists even in a more heightened state at the time that we're in right now. And so, like I said, again, I said I commend the author and I'll, and I'll be supporting the bill, and thank you for the testimony of Pete Santes as well as the Attorney General. Thank you.
Sisus Massey. Senator Duñez. Senator Canata?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you to my colleague Senator Fisher for introducing this legislation. I was actually looking at it, doing it myself. I wanted to clarify if the fine would be $25? Yeah. Oh. Okay, I take back my comment then, but I support this measure. I guess we'll look at fines in the session floor. And thank you to, thank you to the panelists for joining us today and giving us your testimony. We appreciate your, your support and input. It's very much appreciated. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, Senator Canata. Senator Barnett?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. I too stand in full support of another great measure by Senator Tom Fisher. Thank you so much for proffering this legislation, Senator.
No problem. I'd also, I stand in full support, and I'd ask that you, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Minority Leader, Senator Blas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I probably am the only one that's up here that can most appreciate this bill because I know what it's like to be able to look, okay, at the barrel of a gun of a drug trafficker. And Pete, I'm sure you can recognize that. It's, I can give you your firsthand experiences, you know, from law enforcement as to why this is probably, you know, unfortunate as was stated. This is something that we need to be able to look at. And Pete, Mrs. Santes, I just wanted to clarify that you had mentioned earlier that you had, there was some caution. Just to clarify, the caution wasn't necessarily in what this bill intends to do. Your caution was more so how it was going to be enforced or how it was going to be executed. Is that clear, right?
That is correct.
So there is nothing to do with the bill?
No.
Okay. So I just, I needed to make sure that that's clarified for the sake of the committee. But, you know, ma'am, thank you very much for continuing and for everything that you do. I know how tough it is for you and, you know, and how this can provide you a greater tool with regard to, for lack of a better term, the negotiations that is done, okay? I know firsthand and full well, and... I know firsthand and full well, and I appreciate both, you know, your testimonies based on not just your personal, but your personal, your professional experiences in this thing. Okay? I can very much relate, okay? And I very much support this piece of legislation. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. I'll now allow the sponsor to close.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your testimony and for my colleagues, and thank you for their questions. I appreciate it and, and I know we've got, we've still got some more work to do, so I'll just end it there. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no additional individuals to testify, the committee will consider Bill Number 79-37 COR duly heard. We'll now move on to item three on our agenda. This is Bill Number 21-37 COR introduced by Dwayne T. D. Sinicalis. It is an act to add a new Article Eight to Chapter Eighty Title Nine Guam Code annotated relative to the creation of provision to authorize judicial corporal punishment as an additional form of judicial sentence. I'd like to thank again our Vice Chair, Senator Brown, for being here, Senator Sinicalis, Senator Taitikwe, Senator Fisher, Senator Luhon, Senator Duennas, Senator Caneta, Senator Barnett, and our Minority Leader, Senator Blas. So we have about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, about eight people signed up to testify. I'd invite them to the table if there's space, otherwise we'll have another round. And I'd like to ask the sponsor of the bill, Senator Dwayne Sinicalis, to introduce it.
Hello, Hafadi again. Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I left the House this morning, my wife says, go out, go, go ahead and go out there and do your best. At least nobody can say that you didn't give it a shot. This bill comes to us, I, it's something that I, I found in Singapore. It was, it was quite interesting this past spring break when I saw a lot of parents taking their children abroad and traveling and it's a wonderful thing to see because maybe someday they might bring something back and they can, they can help find, find something that might improve our society or government. So that was really nice. This bill I've, I've actually found in Singapore. In 2014, we were invited down to Singapore and before I went down there, I read on everything I could about Singapore before I got there. The place was a really, really beautiful place. It was economically vibrant, place was very, very clean, it was very, very orderly, and I, I kinda asked myself what made that so? And, well, crime was real low down there and it, and it's probably also due to, to the fact that there's caning down there and the government has been very uncompromising when it comes to the, doling out, doling out punishment. There was one instance down there where diplomat from, from a Middle Eastern country had, had committed a heinous crime, a rape on one of the hotel, and Singapore said, no, we're, we're gonna punish this guy. And they've done it to many other people throughout the years, even despite their government. You have to be strong when you're dealing with crime, to have some type of iron in you. This, this bill no doubt comes from, you know, the frustration I've, I've heard from a lot of our constituents when I was on the campaign trail. One thing that I, I do is that I try to keep my promises. So this was my promise to address crime. There's, when I, when I look back and try to address crime, there's one crime when I was a child that comes to mind, and it was, I was about twelve years old. And there was this really, really pretty girl that was brutally sexually assaulted, brutally murdered in her home. And the, the, and it shocked the island. And it shocked me too as a child. She was about sixteen years old. And that person was never brought to justice. And as a child, I told myself that one day, if I ever was in a position, that I would do something about that, to never let that happen again. The medical examiner opined that he had stabbed her so brutally that it went straight through her chest and went right through the sheets that were behind her. It was a very brutal, brutal murder. And that stuck with my head, stuck in my head for the longest time. And I said that if I ever had a chance to make this right and to prevent crimes like this from happening to our people, that I will do it. And by miracle, I just happened to get elected this last election. And here I am, I'm ready to address the crime that I promised our constituents who are tired of it, tired of being victimized. So this is what I proffer. And I, I hope to give it a chance. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senators Sinicalis. On a note for that, for this bill, we invited testimony from the judiciary, the Guam Police Department, the Guam Human Rights Initiative, the Guam Psychological Association, the UOG Social Work Student Alliance, the Guam Behavioral Health and Social, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center psychiatric and psychologist, Dr. Kirk Bellis. And we have received written testimony, in addition to those who are here, from the judiciary, from Mr. Simeon Palomo, Ms. Carol Prun, Prun. And with that, we will begin the testimony. So we'll begin, we'll begin with the Acting Chief Prosecutor.
Thank you very much. So on behalf of Attorney General Douglas Moylan and myself, I thank you for the opportunity to comment on Bill 2137. The proposed bill seeks to introduce caning as a form of judicial corporal punishment. Guam does not now have a form of corporal punishment for prisoners. The bill suggests that criminals simply be caned rather than serve jail sentences and that this will provide a deterrent and will eliminate the need for a new prison. We understand that this bill reflects a general frustration the general public has with the increased crime on Guam and the way in which citizens have been victimized. Our office is taking steps every day to make sure that those who commit crimes are held accountable, and we will continue to aggressively fight crime and work with our partners in law enforcement to keep our community safe. While we appreciate the current bill has spurred a lot of discussion as to how to address crime in Guam, and that's a conversation that we welcome, there are many concerns with the introduction of corporal punishment. The Office of the Attorney General does not support this bill. Corporal punishment has not been used in the United States for over fifty years, and we note that the two cases that are cited in the bill are from 1878 and 1977. The 1878 case addressed whether shooting someone to death for a first-degree murder charge was a violation of the Eighth Amendment. And though that activity was not found to be a violation of the Eighth Amendment, even that early decision noted that torture and unnecessary, unnecessary cruelty did violate the Eighth Amendment. And similarly, the 1977 case addressed paddling of children at school. So times have changed quite a bit, certainly since the eighteen hundreds, but also since 1977. Paddling a student in school today would be prosecuted as a crime, and it would potentially also expose the individuals who participated in that paddling to a lawsuit for civil rights violation under forty-two U.S.C. Section nineteen eighty-three. Corporal punishment no longer exists in the legal systems of most developed nations in the world. The United Nations Standard Minimum Rules for the Treatment of Prisoners does not condone corporal punishment. In fact, the last resolution of the rules in 2015 was named for Nelson Mandela, who himself endured corporal punishment as a prisoner in South Africa. The first iteration of the rules was in 1955. Bill 2137's proposed legislative history cites a number of countries for the proposition that caning works. However, there's nothing to tie caning in particular to those countries' crime records. Indeed, those countries have some of the worst human rights records, and we do not think that they should be used as a recommendation for criminal justice efforts. The statistics simply indicate low crime rates due to repressive regimes that deny people the basic freedoms we enjoy in the United States. In Malaysia, confinement of prison and detention facilities can be life-threatening, and the corruption of law enforcement is well-known. Significant human rights issues, as reported by the U.S. State Department, included credible threat reports of unlawful or arbitrary killings by the government or its agents, torture and cases of cruel, inhuman, and degrading treatment or punishment by government entities, harsh and life-threatening prison conditions, arbitrary arrest and detention, problems with the independence of the judiciary, arbitrary or unlawful interference with privacy, restrictions on free expression and media, including unjustified arrests or prosecutions of journalists, censorship and the existence of criminal libel laws, restrictions on internet freedom, substantial interference with the freedom of peaceful assembly and freedom of association, severe restrictions on religious freedom, restrictions on freedom of movement, serious government corruption, serious government restrictions on or harassment of domestic human rights organizations, lack of investigation of and accountability for gender-based violence and trafficking in person. Qatar's human rights record has been in the news for years due to its hosting of the World Cup. Again, our own State Department detailed significant human rights issues, which include credible reports of serious restrictions of free expression, including the existence of criminal libel laws, again, substantial interference with the freedom of peaceful assembly and freedom of association, including overly restrictive laws on the organization funding or operation of non-governmental organizations and civil society organizations, restrictions on migrant workers' freedom of movement, access to justice, and vulnerability to abuses, including forced labor, inability of citizens to change their government peacefully in free and fair elections, serious and unreasonable restriction on political participation, including a complete prohibition on political parties, and a lack of investigation and accountability for gender-based violence. Brunei similarly has a record of significant human rights issues, credible reports of degrading treatment or punishment by government authorities, arbitrary or unlawful interference with privacy, serious restrictions on freedom of expression and media, including censorship, the inability of citizens to change their government peacefully through free and fair elections, serious restrictions on political participation, trafficking in persons, lack of investigation of and accountability for gender-based violence, and the widespread practice of type-four femoral genital mutilation and cutting. And the United Arab Emirates, simile has a host of human rights abuses, including arbitrary arrest and detention, including those involving hostile prison conditions such as incommunicado detention by government officials, political prisoners, transnational repression against individuals in another country, unlawful government interference with privacy, serious restrictions on free expression and media, including censorship and enforcement of or threat to enforce criminal libel laws, serious restrictions on internet freedom, substantial interference with the freedom of peaceful assembly and freedom of association, including overly restrictive laws on the organization funding or operation of non-governmental organizations and civil society organizations, inability of citizens, citizens to change their government peacefully through free and fair elections, serious and unreasonable restrictions on political participation, and serious government restrictions or harassment of domestic and international human rights organizations. So the human rights abuses cited above demonstrate that these countries do not permit their citizens the basic constitutional rights that we hold near and dear here in the United States. This in turn raises serious, serious doubts as to the deterrent effect of a particular punishment in these countries. They have low crime rates because they have repressive governments. The justification cited for the bill here are open to doubt. There is no evidence that caning will have a deterrent effect on Guam or that it will reduce recidivism in Guam. Though the proposed legislation suggests otherwise, updating DOC facilities is not dependent on whether caning becomes law. A jail always needs to be state-of-the-art, and it must utilize the most up-to-date security features and programs. The current facility is out of date and needs to be updated. And there are also problems in the bill's application, which would make it unenforceable. The bill notes that lesser crimes should be punished by caning, but it fails to articulate which crimes fall into this category or how the number of strikes would be determined. The bill is also unworkable if it requires a police chief and medical officer to be present at every caning if the law is aimed at numerous lower-level offenses. The law also only applies caning to men, not women, which creates at least an appearance of unconstitutionality, and there may be other civil rights issues implicated in addressing whether certain individuals cannot be caned due to physical status. Every day, we prosecute individuals who assault others, whether in the context of family violence or just simple assault. What we know about domestic violence is that many individuals were themselves abused and grow up thinking that abuse is a normal way of coping. Caning those individuals for having assaulted other people is at least a mixed message, but it certainly will not deter their future abuse of others. It may even encourage it. And in addition to the concerns already raised, adopting corporal punishment sends the wrong message to our children, our community, and those beyond our shores as to the type of society we are. For those reasons, the Attorney General does not support the bill. So again, on behalf of Attorney General Douglas Moylan, I thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 2147, and the Office of the Attorney General remains Guam's toughest law enforcers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Acting Chief Prosecutor Zona. I'd like to recognize the presence of my other colleague, our Legislative Secretary Senator Amanda Shelton. Thank you, Senator. And also the presence of Mayor from Minnehawhaun, Mayor Chagulov, Sisusmasi Mayor. Could I ask Yon Suk Park, did you wish to testify? You were the first person to sign in, so I'd like to invite you if you would like to testify.
My colleague would.
Okay, thank you. So Peter Santos, you're next on the list.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair, and to all your esteemed colleagues. I wish I would have known that it was illegal to be paddled in 1977 because I got paddled twice in 1985 at J.P. Torres Elementary School by Principal Tom Barsinas at the time. But anyways, first and foremost to the author of the bill, Senator Sinicalis, Zalbe Naoyao Dunklu Naonimo, Pudesti Unintroduci. I want to give you great encouragement. I wish with all my heart that I could support the bill, but for the reasons I will explain, I cannot. And there are legal reasons. But I feel, and I understand the intent, and I thank you for introducing it because it did, it did start the conversation. You know, I told someone that I was gonna come testify today and they said, why is Santa Claus in charge of caning people? I said, well, he's the guy that keeps the list of who's naughty and who's nice, right? So, of course, it, it would be you, right? But notwithstanding all the policy reasons, so our law, supreme law of the land is the United States Constitution, all right? And then the federal statutes and then state statutes. So where do treaties fall in? Treaties are given the same force and effect of federal statutes. So the U.S. signed on to the convention, the U.N. Convention Against Torture and Other Cruel and Inhumane Degraded Treatment or Punishment. It was introduced in 1987, it was signed by the U.S. in 1988, and it was ratified in 1994, which kind of coincided with the Frye incident in, I think it's, that's the kid's name, in Singapore, right? With Bill Clinton and all that hoopla. So anyways, I'll just read from the convention that the term torture means any act by which severe pain or suffering, whether physical or mental, is intentionally inflicted on a person for such purposes as obtaining from him or a third person information or a confession or punishing him for an act that he or a third person has committed or is suspected to have committed, or intimidating or coercing him or a third person, or for any other reason based on discrimination of any kind, when such pain or suffering is inflicted by or at the instigation of or with the consent or acquiescence. at the instigation of or with the consent or acquiescence of a public official or other person acting in an official capacity. All right? So the U.S. made one reservation, which is that this would not encompass the death penalty. So, from a legal standpoint, I believe that this legislation would not be legal. It would be void ab initio. We've been recently, we learned that term recently, right? With the abortion bill situation that's going on. So, let's say though, the other concern that I have is, let's say though that it does get enacted into law, and the other concern would be, and it doesn't get challenged, and nobody puts an injunction on it, right? And so it's in our books. The other problem that would stem from this is that other jurisdictions will not extradite people to us if we have this law. Because by their interpretation, this would be torture. And other jurisdictions will not, so if we have a murderer who flees to California, California won't extradite them to us if we have this law in the books. So that's the other legal concern. But like I said in the beginning, I feel the frustration, and I commend you, Senator Siniklis, for pushing this, because it's getting a very important conversation started, you know? And the reason why, you know, I was concerned about this and looked into it is because, you know, I was in Afghanistan. I was the operational law attorney, which means I was the guy that had to deal with the law of armed conflict. And part of my duties was detention operations, making sure that what we were doing complied with Geneva Conventions. And so, of course, that's a total different situation. You're in a combat zone or whatever. But still, going back to what I opened with, is that the U.S. is a signatory to this U.N. Convention. And as such, it has the force and effect of federal law. And that's why, if you look around in all the other U.S. jurisdictions, they don't have similar legislation. Because it would be, in my opinion, void ab initio. All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santos. With that, we'll have Joyce Martin to provide testimony.
Hafiday, respected senators, my name is Joyce Martin. I am a member of the Social Work Student Alliance and a student in the Bachelor of Social Work Program at the University of Guam. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to testify as a SWASA member in opposition of Bill Number 21-37, introduced by Senator Dwayne Siniklis. We are concerned about the impacts of judicial corporal punishment. We need to consider the mental health of our communities and our families. A recent study on ethnic inequalities and psychological distress in Guahan indicates that Chamoros as indigenous people have higher rates of psychological distress compared to whites, Caucasians, particularly for severe distress. The study suggests possible links between the distress and psychological impact of colonial rule, erosion of identity, and lack of autonomy. We also know that Chamoros make up the largest ethnic group at the Departments of Correction. The Gallen Center for Health and Social Policy in Malaysia reports that public caning increases risk for PTSD, anxiety, and depression. Although Bill Number 21-37 does not propose public caning, we do not know what full effects of judicial corporal punishment will be. The bill also states that access to counseling post-caning will be provided, but it does not protect sentenced individuals who are undergoing mental health issues already, such as substance use disorder or depression, nor does it indicate what potential mental health trauma might result. In addition, we must acknowledge racial disparities that exist within our institutions. For example, racial disparities exist in use of corporal punishment in public schools across the U.S. Black children are at a higher risk of being subjected to corporal punishment than white children. Most relevant to this bill, however, is that racial disparities exist within the criminal justice system in the U.S. Based on national statistics, black Americans comprise 14% of the population, but are five times more likely to be incarcerated when compared to white Americans. While there is no clear answer on how these trends may translate to Guahan, there is a definite possibility that unspoken ethnic and racial biases could occur here as well. In the face of global, national, and local efforts to address institutional racism, this is the time to enact laws that build community connections and strength instead of enabling potential violence in our institutions. Our community must continue to support our people through rehabilitation and preventative programs, and not through institutional enforcement of physical punishment. Once again, I thank you for the opportunity to testify against Bill Number 21-37 as a SWASA member and a citizen of Guahan. I urge Eileh Hesletur in Guahan to oppose this bill, invest in the well-being of our people through rehabilitation and services, and strengthen families through prevention programs. Undankulu na Sizus Masi and Kirisho Taabur.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martin. With that, we'll now have the next speaker, Haani Balajaja. Is Haani here? No? Okay. Next, we have Christina Leon Guerrero, not here to provide testimony. Jeremiah Aldon.
Buenas en Hafiday, Chair Sinterlahi, and all honorable members of the committee. My name is Jeremiah Aldon. I am a student in the Bachelor of Social Work Program at the University of Guam, and I'm speaking on behalf on the Social Work Student Alliance. I want to thank you for this opportunity to testify in opposition to Bill Number 21-37. Bill Number 21-37, introduced by Senator Dwayne Siniklis, aims to implement judicial corporal punishment, specifically caning, as another form of sentencing to decrease crime rates and prison overpopulation on Guahan. However, we believe that Bill Number 21-37 will promote accepting physical violence in society by people in authority and potentially inflame racial disparities within the criminal justice system. In social work, we strive to promote policies that prevent and eliminate domination and discrimination against any person, group, or class. Social work encourages a restorative justice perspective by repairing the harm caused by criminal behavior and restoring relationships between offenders, victims, and communities. Rather than the bill being a remedy for crimes, it has the potential to cause offenders some sort of physical, mental, and emotional trauma. Even with the counseling being provided post-caning, this type of punishment could be severe and traumatic. While we agree that prison overpopulation is a concern, decarceration efforts should be effective, sustainable, and socially just. Approaches that replace incarceration should be the ones that are more effective at addressing root causes of problem behaviors. We cannot expect that caning offenders will solve our social issues. Bill Number 21-37 emphasizes that corporal punishment in schools is legal in the U.S. However, this is not without contention. There are many national organizations that oppose its practice in schools. For example, the American Civil Liberties Union and the Human Rights Watch recommend that corporal punishment be banned in the U.S. as it violates rights to physical integrity and human dignity. It is degrading and humiliating. And as they note, research suggests that as a result of physical punishment, children are more inclined to engage in aggressive conduct towards peers, family, and teachers. What will the unintended effects of judicial punishment on adults in our communities be? We already know violence is a key social issue, and that here in Guahan, excessive physical force towards children, our elderly, and within families continues to be an issue and illegal. Judicial corporal punishment is a violation of human dignity and has the potential to inflict physical, mental, and emotional trauma on a person. As an aspiring social worker, I value human rights and the protection of all individuals from deliberate trauma, even those within the criminal justice system. I urge all members of Eileh Hesletur in Guahan to consider the outcomes of implementing judicial corporal punishment in the justice system and to oppose Bill Number 21-37. Undankulu na Sizus Masi.
Sizus Masi. Fred Bredalje?
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, Senators. My name is Fred Bredalje Jr., retired Chief of Police, Guam Police Department, and former Director, Veterans Affairs. Buenas en Hafiday. I'm opposed to the passage of Bill 21-37 COR that I contend violates not only our Organic Act provisions on cruel and unusual punishment, but the U.S. Constitution with provisions related to the cruel and unusual punishment with the violence to be inflicted on convicted prisoners within our jurisdiction. But additionally, this legislation that passed is a violation of human rights defended and recognized by several national and international human rights organizations. It is disappointing, Senator Dwayne Siniklis, that you're the primary sponsor, that you have not withdrawn the legislation, which is expected to be opposed and challenged by many of our criminal justice professionals that serve or have served our island to keep Guam safe and ensure a fair justice system that is decent and aligned with the value of civil, constitutional, and human rights. I have not met any individual that I've worked with during my career as a law enforcement officer, a current employee of Guam's law enforcement professionals, who desire to hold a cane and violently hit a prisoner at the Department of Corrections. First of all, I'd like to just say a little bit about my background. Again, as I said, I was former Director of Veterans Affairs, retired Chief of Police, military veteran with assignments as a correctional security specialist, military police officer, and U.S. Marine Corps recruiting representative. My education and training received have involved undergraduate and graduate courses and research in academic fields of law enforcement, homeland security, correctional security, human relations, public administration, and international relations at the Naval Postgraduate School, Center of Homeland Defense and Security, University of Oklahoma Human Relations Graduate Studies, University of Guam School of Business and Public Administration, Guam Community College, Federal Bureau of Investigation, Law Enforcement Executive Development, Asia-Pacific Center for Security Studies, and the United States Institute of Peace. Next, I would like to highlight the issues of reliability, trustworthiness, and weakness of the profer legislation findings and provisions that would contend invalidates the entire legislation's effectiveness in the context of deterrence of crime through the caning of convicted prisoners at the Department of Corrections. The first observable weakness of the findings indicated within the proposed legislation involves the presentation of crime statistics from the Guam Police Department's Uniform Crime Reports dated 2020, which is two years old. These are two years old crime statistics, given that we are currently in the year 2023. Other observable significant issues of the crime statistics that are outdated within the findings of this profer legislation is that comparisons are made between only a few categories and/or classifications of crimes against persons and crimes against property, leaving out many other categories or classifications entirely from the UCR 2020. This is tantamount to what contend is cherry picking or singling out certain areas of the UCR to validate the case for the profer legislation. I would argue that cherry picking of certain classifications and not showing other areas is representative of a weak and faulty research data collection, and if intentionally done, also represents confirmation bias. Other weaknesses within the findings in relation to the justification of the profer legislation to legalize caning, a form of corporal punishment, on convicted prisoners in Guam's criminal justice system, was the signing of a death penalty case, the Werkeson versus Youtha, 99 U.S., 130 in 1878. It is commonly known upon review of published research that capital punishment is different than corporal punishment. Capital punishment refers to the death of the offender, importantly, not through natural costs, but state sanction to terminate the offender's life. Whereas corporal punishment refers to pain or harm inflicted on the body of the offender. Corporal punishment is a state sanction to physically hurt or harm the offender. The intent of this profer legislation is to legalize the corporal punishment of caning on convicted prisoners adjudicated when Guam's criminal justice process. So it's puzzling about the reasoning of citing a capital punishment case that is not comparable to current provisions relative to caning for this profer legislation. As noted within the findings of the proposed legislation is a case Ingram versus Wright, 430 U.S., 651, 1977, cited that involves corporal punishment in schools as a disciplinary means. Yet the case cited has no connection or relevance to potential use of corporal punishment on convicted prisoners in our nation's correction slash prison system that is prohibited by law. Nor I would argue would it have any relevance to the intent of this profer legislation. Students across America have different social and learning experiences as they attend public or private schools today in comparison of years during the 70s and earlier, and our students of today in 2023 are certainly different than individuals entering the adult criminal justice system to pay their debts to society. These are two different life experiences. Obviously, the attempt to justify the use of caning today against convicted prisoners under the custody of the Department of Corrections Guam by inference that corporal punishment is a form of paddling of students during the 70s is legally allowable, I would argue, is a faulty comparison. It is noted again that the findings continue to infer a comparison between capital punishment and corporal punishment in the context of U.S. Constitutional issue of cruel and unusual punishment, when as indicated previously, both are different. What is alarming with this proposed legislation is that within the findings, the mention of Singapore and Malaysia with a few crime data are listed to support the profer legislation. And what is not mentioned is that these two nations are considered by international rights organization, inclusive United States Human Rights and Civil Rights Organization, as violators of human rights, where the judicial system adoption of caning. Most importantly, Senator Siniklis, you're not a citizen of these two nations, and you have never conducted a complete scholarly study of their crime challenges to validate the conclusion that the use of caning in their nations resulted in low crime rates. The nation-states of Singapore and Malaysia have different cultural practices and values than our island of Guam culture, especially if our island's laws align with the United States of America. I noted within the findings, the legalization of caning intent or purpose would be to lower the prison population, and it would be a deterrence to crime. I would argue that the use of state-sponsored violence of caning would not be a deterrent of crime, because with my experience working in the criminal justice system as a law enforcement officer, correctional security officer with higher management levels of policing, the actions of criminals are done without any rational thought process of crime punishment consequences. Punishment of crime and consequences of criminal actions are not considered by the typical criminal that is high on drugs or have a low mental aptitude of choice mate of their life situation. The deterrent to crime has been validated involves the layer of security and law enforcement presence in the community. Adopting a human rights violation and the U.S. Constitutional and Civil Rights violation to lower the prison population with the use of state-sponsored violence of caning is an insult and compromise of our humanitarian values that although Senators Siniklis and others want to give up on the legalized caning, I'm not ready to give up on. Guam's community should cherish the goodness and humanitarian values we have with the treatment of our prison population. I've highlighted several issues noted within the legislative findings, yet there are some unanswered questions that lead to certain issues of this legislation worth exploring. It appears that Senators Siniklis or his staff has not consulted with Guam medical professionals. With the possibility that serving as a medical officer to approve the violent act of caning a convicted prisoner to be subject to injuries and risk of psychological harm in the long term is in conflict with the ethical standards of medical professionals to do no harm of persons that could lead to a legal complaint, a medical malpractice. According to Evelyn Ngio, International Legal Advisor for Southeast Asia of International Commission of Jurists, Advocates for Justice and Human Rights, international human rights bodies have made clear that caning and other forms of corporal punishment violate the absolute prohibition of torture and other cruel and inhuman or degrading treatment or punishment, as such must be prohibited. And there's a link in there where you could find that, Senator Siniklis. The ICJ have focused their work on nations that have used their professionals to sanction state-sponsored violence of caning, and have worked to challenge the medical professionals to abide by their medical ethics, refrain from participating in state-sponsored violence. This would challenge our own medical community of professionals to refuse to participate on caning of Guam convicted prisoners. I have no doubt, should this legislation of caning be passed... I have no doubt, should this legislation of caning be passed, Guam will get the most unwelcome attention from ICJ and other human rights organizations. There may be repercussions involving our reputation globally. We would be the only territory of the United States with a reputation as joining the list of human rights violators linked to caning. There is no state nor territory of the United States of America that sanctions state violence of caning for sentenced convicted prisoners. Senator Nicholas, caning legislation will be in conflict with the United Nations Office of High Commission that published a resolution of six principles. Principle one: Health personnel, particularly physicians charged with medical care of prisoners and detainees, have a duty to provide them with protection of their physical and mental health and treatment of disease and same quality standard as afforded to those who are not imprisoned or detained. Principle two: It is a gross convention of medical ethics as well as an offense under applicable international instruments for health personnel, particularly physicians, to engage actively or passively in acts which constitute participation in complicity and incitement or to attempts to commit torture or cruel, inhuman, or degrading treatment or punishment. Principle three: It is the contravention of medical ethics for health personnel, particularly physicians, to be involved in any professional relationship with prisoners, detainees' purpose of which is not solely to evaluate, protect, or improve their physical or mental health. Principle four: It is the convention of medical ethics for health personnel, particularly physicians, to apply their knowledge and skills in order to assist in the interrogation of prisoners, detainees, in a manner that may adversely affect the physical, mental health or condition of such persons, detainees, which is not in accordance with relevant international instruments. There are about six principles here, but basically, I just want to shorten this and just say that the medical professional community on Guam would be challenged if they were -- or any medical officer that you refer in your legislation here that would have to watch the caning take place and examine the prisoner before their caning. But I want to continue. The World Medical Association have adopted a 68 General Assembly the following standard aligned with the WMA Declaration of Tokyo that strictly forbids physicians that contend, condone, or participate in the practice of torture or forms of cruel, inhuman, or degrading treatment, and will require them to respect the confidentiality of medical information. The legal challenges expected to contest the passage of this legislation on caning are legal community on the island are expected, I would argue, to rise to the challenge of opposing state-sponsored violence of caning prisoners. There are information available from the American Bar Association that describes the standards and values of treatment of prisoners within America's criminal justice system. My conclusion. Lastly, I would like to conclude my testimony with an interesting point to consider. Senators Nicholas and I, we are both military veterans who served honorably for our nation with democratic values of freedom and justice with efforts to demonstrate our humanity and leadership as citizens. During our service, we were always subjected to the standards and regulation of the UCMJ, the Uniform Code of Military Justice. It is interesting that with military service, hypothetically, should you, Senators Nicholas, hit or injure any military prisoner of war through the method of caning, you would have violated the Uniform Code of Military Justice. You would have been subjected to prosecution of war crimes. With the Violent Act, many of our WWII generations were violently beaten or executed. My family, the Boddalio family, my grandfather, B.J. Boddalio, and my uncle, Paul Boddalio, both who served as Senators in this legislature, they were jailed and beaten by the Japanese during the occupation of Guam. They were later released, but they bore the scars of whipping by the Japanese military authorities. Yet, despite that horrible experience, they managed to maintain some high values aligned with the culture's strength and resilience, and they respect human rights. They had more appreciation of that. In our nation's history, there have been great leaders that have advocated for nonviolence and human rights. Even leaders in the international community have amplified the message of nonviolence and humanitarian treatment of people. Let's reflect on these national and international leaders. One of them, Martin Luther King Jr. I believe, Senator, you had a contest that you offered to school students to give a, you know, a presentation on Martin Luther King Jr., and he said, "Violence never brings permanent peace. It solves no social problem. It merely creates new and more complicated ones. Violence is impractical, impractical, because it is a descending spiral, ending in destruction for all. It is immoral, because it seeks to humiliate the opponent rather than win his understanding. It seeks to annihilate rather than convert. Violence is immoral, because it thrives on hatred rather than love. It destroys community and makes brotherhood impossible. It leaves society in monologue rather than dialogue. Violence ends up defeating itself. It creates bitterness in the survivors and brutality in the destroyers." Martin Luther King Jr. also said, "Commit yourself to the noble struggle of human rights. You will make a greater person of yourself, a greater nation, a greater nation of your country, and a finer world to live in." Ellen Key said, "Corporal punishment is as humiliating for him who gives it as for him who receives it. It is ineffective, besides, and neither shame nor physical pain have any effect than a hardening one." Juan Janati Lo, Minister, Malaysia, indicated, "Caning is brutal, outdated punishment. It is inhumane. It was inherited from colonial time. Why is it done in Malaysia? Even Britain itself no longer does it." Nelson Mandela, "No form of violence can ever excuse a society that wishes to call itself decent." Nelson Mandela also said, "Government violence can do only one thing, and that is to breed counterviolence. Violence produces only something resembling justice, but it distances people from the possibility of living justly without violence." Leo Tolstoy. And Mohammed Gandhi said, "I object to violence, because it appears to do good. The good is only temporary. The evil it does is permanent." Mary McCarthy, "In violence, we forget who we are." Martin Luther, "Nothing good ever comes of violence." And Mother Teresa, "Human rights are not privileged conferred by government; they are every human being's entitlement by virtue of its humanity." And of course, Matthew 26:52, "Put your sword back in its place," Jesus said to him, "for all who draw the sword will die by the sword." It has always been my hope that Senators Nicholas withdraws this proposed legislation that condones state-sponsored violence, and will hopefully focus to rise up with better humanitarian and ethical values in the context of our criminal justice system with the treatment of offenders. It is also my hope that the Senators at the 37 Guam Legislature readily see the wrongness of this proposed legislation that I consider state-sponsored violence and have the wisdom reject it based on our humanitarian values. I would hope that our governor and lieutenant governor communicate their positions about this legislation, especially our governor, who is affiliated with professional healthcare to treat and heal people, not condone violence. Additionally, our lieutenant governor, who previously worked for the courts and had the opportunity to promote a justice system that respects human rights for those incarcerated. Nankulu Nasidusmasi, thank you.
Nasidusmasi, Chief Boddalio. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this bill? If not, I'd like to thank all of you who've come to testify on this bill for your very, very insightful testimony, thorough, and for those who put it in writing, I'm especially grateful. That's a big help to us and to all the Senators who were able to follow along. And any other testimony that is submitted will also be compiled into the committee report if it's submitted prior to its passage. So I'd like to, again, note that there was other written testimony from the judiciary, Simeon Palomo, Carol Prueyn. Yes. All right, I'll now hear from the sponsor of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've never heard anybody so eloquently uphold the rights of criminals like you, Mr. Boddalio. Thank you, Mr. -- thank you, Chief, for that panel. I heard you very well. I am not withdrawing this bill. I'm going to go down with this bill if I have to. I am sick and tired of people being victimized. You sit there, you let this stuff happen. We're not going to take this no more. I have 629 more days. I came -- I was elected. I actually tried to determine whether corporal -- or capital punishment was good, but I had to weigh it. You know, someone committed a crime and they were -- or someone was improperly charged with a crime and improperly convicted. I couldn't live with myself if somebody was put to death wrongly. So I said, "What was the compromise? What could be the compromise? If I were to have capital punishment, I would be putting my brethren to death. At least with corporal punishment, he could get whipped. Punish him for the atrocious crime he may have committed, and then after he served his time, he can go home to his family. That's restorative. But I will not withdraw this bill. I will not. I stand -- I sit here representing all those people out there who are sick and tired of crime, sick and tired of being victimized, and I'm not going to have this anymore, not on my watch. I'm going to try to do my very best. If this bill doesn't pass, I'm going to do something else. Until we punish the people who commit crimes against others, I will not -- you will not deter me. You will not. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senators Nicholas. Vice Chair, Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly appreciate the position that Senator Dwayne S. Nicholas has taken with regards to this bill. I don't know if I'm going to vote for it or not, but I'm definitely open to the discussion. I agree. I think our people are fed up with the abuse and the crime that is happening in our community. And just so I don't get misquoted, in case anyone wants to do another press release, I mean, the amount of crime in our community, including the drug problem. I had made a statement a few weeks ago that even elderly in our community are being harmed in their own homes. We can talk about the protections of human rights and not wanting to bring psychological harm to criminals, but what we don't discuss here is the crime that's been brought upon our people. Not only have things stolen from them, because physical things are replaceable, but what about our victims in our community that have been physically harmed, that have been raped, that have been abused, that have been stabbed? Where are their voices? What are we doing to protect them? And them is us. Them is us, our friends and family out in the community. And things are reaching a level of frustration, because we talk about the rights of criminals and how we need to treat them, but what about our victims? Who's advocating for the victims that are harmed, that in many cases have trauma? PTSD, if you want to say, or whatever other harm comes to a person that maybe lives with this. If they survive it, live with this kind of harm forever, never feeling safe in their community. I think that's a fear probably every resident lives with in some form or other. So while I understand people can say, "Oh, this is barbaric. This is cruel and unusual punishment." What recourse does a society, what recourse do our people have for the crimes that we see every single day, reported every single day, of every week, of every month, of every year in this community? I don't know what the ultimate answer is. I wish there was, but I don't find this acceptable, that we continue to talk about the harm that those that have brought harm to our community. I mean, the perpetrator, all of a sudden, is the victim, and the victim gets forgotten. That's not justice to me. So while I don't know if I will vote for this bill or not, I think the position that Senator S. Nicholas has presented is the sentiment that's felt by a lot of people. And I don't know anyone. Has anyone here never been harmed by crime on Guam? My family has. I think that can be said for many families on Guam, and how the existing system really is not addressing the problems that we have. So with that, thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Sorry for that delay. You know, I want to commend everyone who came here to testify. It's not easy when you're coming in front of someone to say that you're not supporting something. It's so much easier when you are supporting it. But I do have an issue myself with this piece of legislation, and I'd like to commend you, Chief Boddalio, for providing your testimony. It was a lot of research that you did. You know, I was pretty much stuck on this section when you talked about being a military. That really hit hard. But there was something I looked up to as well. In 1990, the Supreme Court addressed the issue of corporal punishment as a form of judicial sentencing in a case of the United States versus Tyree. In this case, the defendant was sentenced to be whipped as part of the punishment. The Supreme Court upheld the defendant's conviction, but held that the use of corporal punishment was prohibited under the Eighth Amendment. So, you know, that being said, I don't think that any of us want to introduce legislation that goes against what the federal guidelines or federal laws are, you know. In fact, we can't do that. We'll be up to our ears in lawsuits. So, you know, though I know the intention is good for Senator S. Nicholas, but I can't support this legislation. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Taitigui. Senator Fisher.
Thank you, ma'am. Point of inquiry? Point of inquiry to Senator Taitigui? I just want a citation for the case she cited.
Yes, we'll get it. It will be in the record.
Okay, that's fair enough.
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker. He's not here to question me, is he?
No. Senator, I said it's in the record. So the record's going to be printed. Senators, you can always review the committee report.
Except for she didn't give us a citation, so that's what I was asking for.
Citation is United States versus Tyree, T-Y-E-R-R. I mean, T-Y-R-E-E.
I'm sorry. That's not a citation. P-Y-R-E-E. Pyree? What is that? Tyree?
Do you have questions, Senator Fisher?
Yeah, I was asking for a citation.
For the panel? Do you have questions for the panel?
Yes, panel members. Seriously. Seriously. You won't let me ask what the citation is? All right, fair enough. Okay, I agree with Senator Brown. I don't know, Senator S. Nicholas, I don't know how I'm going to vote on the bill, but I certainly congratulate your passion and your honesty in bringing it forward, but I have not decided for myself either. And so, Mr. Santos, if I could ask you a question. You were speaking earlier about a, I think it's a United Nations Convention to which the United States is a part?
Yes.
Okay, which convention is that?
So, this is the Convention Against Torture. It's also known as UNCAT, the UN Convention Against Torture. It was signed in 1988 but not ratified by Congress until 1994. The case that Senator Taitigui was citing was a 1990 case. That's U.S. versus Tyree.
Tyree.
T-Y-R-E-E. Yeah, so that preceded the ratification.
Do you have the citation for Tyree?
I do not have the site, but that is the case. I'm familiar with that case.
Do you know what? Is it from a circuit or the Supreme?
No, it's a Supreme Court case. Yeah. So, again, the convention was signed in '88 but not ratified until '94. So that's when it actually takes effect.
Okay, and, all right, the reason I'm asking that question is it seems like you've raised a supremacy clause issue.
Yes.
In fact, you stated that if -- well, let me ask a question this way. Would we be violating that federal -- it's federal law.
While treaties have the force and effect of federal law.
So would we be violating that if we were determined caning was not torture?
Yes, we would. Because by definition, in the treaty, and the U.S. has acknowledged, and there is also a provision in the treaty that says the U.S. must endeavor to ensure that all of the states and territories and jurisdictions of the United States comply with the treaty.
Okay, and, well, I'm gonna drill down on that one just a little bit. Is, and the reason I'm doing that is because if the facts are, you've just recently presented, then this is dead on arrival. The supremacy clause simply wouldn't allow it to go forward. Are you saying that caning is defined as torture within that act?
Yes, and, and it wouldn't be, the, the legislature could pass it, the governor could sign it, but in order to stop it, someone would have to bring suit. Someone would have to ask for an injunction, right? And then that would bring it into the court. And then the court will determine, of course, it's very plainly obvious that they will determine that it is violated of the treaty, and then it would be, then ruled unconstitutional.
Okay, but if, well, to use the, I guess, the Volgate, if there was some wiggle room as to the definition of caning and torture, then there would not be a supremacy clause problem. Is that correct?
That is correct, but as, well, the U.S. Supreme Court precedents actually is, is not really relevant to what the treaty says. But the treaty is very plain and obvious. It's in very plain language. And like I said, the U.S. only asked for one exception, and that's what, what all countries can do, right? There's caveats that they can ask for. And the caveat is that none of this treaty would apply to the death penalty.
Okay. All right, so I guess we're gonna, we'll have to, maybe we can ask legal counsel to render an opinion on the supremacy clause question. Sorry, I didn't mean to ask you that.
Right.
Oh, I'm just gonna follow up. What was the, the rationale behind the Tyree case?
I'm sorry?
The Tyree case you'd.
Oh, that was an Eighth Amendment issue. It was, it was considered cruel and unusual. But again, like I said, that doesn't touch the, the issue of the treaty.
But I understand it was Eighth Amendment, but do you remember the cert- facts and circumstances of the case? I mean, did it involve a juvenile? Was the person impaired?
No, no, it was for corporal punishment, judicial corporal punishment, just as what we're, we're arguing are the issue that is at play today.
Okay. Well, we'll have a look at that case, but that might just answer the mail.
It, it could, but I, I wanna just reiterate again, like I stated, that I wish I could support this bill, but for legal reasons, I can't. I share the, the same passion and sentiments that Senator Brown had mentioned.
Thank you, Attorney Santos. Thank you. There's no question there. Senator Luhana, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. You know, I certainly understand the, the passion of Senator St. Nicholas, as is known Senator Santa. He's got a very big, a very big heart and his compassion. And you know, the one, I don't think, there's not one of us up here that, or even down there, that's not been a recipient of either the paddle or the, the belt or the quata, you know? And I can understand that. And where Senator St. Nicholas is, is coming from is, is the fact that you talk about situations, I hear all the testimonies that, that have been brought forth, eliminates the feelings of, of the victims. In this house alone, in this house alone, there's an individual here whose family member not too long ago was decapitated. I'm sure that person will say, just give me 30 seconds with that individual. Just 30 seconds. So I understand the, the, the passion behind this. As Senator Santa and all of us, we're sick of, of the crimes that, that are happening here in our island. We're sick of it. And as he said, it was his campaign promise. I give him that. I also understand, of course, the, the, the legal ramifications. But the one thing, again, that we always hear is that, oh, the, the rights of the prisoners or the rights of the, the accused. How about the victims? It's hardly ever talked about, the rights of the victims. These, and they have to live with this forever. So that being said, again, because of the legal ramifications and we're the house of laws, crafters of laws, we definitely have to move forward with the right kinds of laws that are constitutional. So I understand that. So, in its current form, I don't know if I, if I can support it. I hope that we can make it better, and we'll be constitutional muster. But that being said, again, I, I just wanna say, again, I give the, the author a kudos because he's had it. He's had it. And Santa can get mad as well. He knows when you are naughty, and he won't come to your house that day when he's supposed to come. So, thank you, Senator Santa.
Thank you, Senator Luhana. Senator Duennas.
To this monse, Madam Speaker, I also wanna follow several of my colleagues, really much along the lines of Senator Brown, but I wanna say this to you, Senator St. Nicholas, for sure. I'm glad you're not gonna withdraw this bill. It is your right, it is your duty as a duly-elected senator by the people to introduce legislation that you believe, that you believe is appropriate. If it's deemed otherwise and it's heard, that that bill means its fate. But never let anybody tell you to withdraw a bill that you've entered. We've had bills introduced in this legislature to name the boonie dog as the official dog of Guam. People chuckle, people laugh. That bill saw its light of day as well. So the bottom line is, is that, Senator, you have your right, stand on your right. Let this bill hit the floor. We'll debate it, and we'll see where it goes from there. But I commend you for standing up for victims. I commend you for expressing your outrage, because you're expressing what a lot of people feel and understand. If this starts the conversation, and I commend the social work students for being here and your activism, let's make sure when we talk about restorative justice, we always start with the victim. Because they're the ones who are in the meat, on the receiving end of violence and actions that affect their lives. In closing, Madam Chair, you know, I know, Fred, you said that, you know, violence is terrible. I'm gonna tell you this, I think abortion is very violent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Cananta, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Speaker. I commend my colleague, Dwayne St. Nicholas, definitely Santa. The guy has patience beyond my comprehension. But I echo his sentiments. Enough is enough. I think this, again, can serve as an option for the judiciary or its parties to opt for. But again, this is not for our decision. It's up to those who are in the capacity to make those decisions. And I think the author's sentiments are really just on finding some kinda solution or some kinda resolve for victims and individuals who have been wrongfully mistreated and trying to find them some justice. You know, for me personally, I support, I, I was thinking about dropping as well, capital punishment. I, I think we, we continue to hear the nonsense of people being released, and we continue to go around, again, in circles and circles of trying to catch a mouse with a, a cat or a dog. It's really ridiculous. So I, I guess with this opportunity, there are gonna be some challenges with any opportunity, right? And I think the author's intent is, oh, what we want is to really find some justice for those individuals who have been wrongfully treated, and, again, help them find some closure to their situation. I personally would rather this thing be done publicly, because I've been spanked in my life. I think we've all had a, a time of our life where we were actually spanked, and it's not just in school. If your family roch- brought, brought some values into your life, you'd be disciplined. And I think that's a lot of the, lot of the situat- a lot of times, a situation really needs to be taught at home. A lot of these kids these days, unfortunately, are lacking a lot of discipline. And we cannot enforce that as government leaders, more or less as leaders. People in their own homes have to discipline their own children and raise some civil beings, because I, I appreciate you, you individuals who, who want to echo, echo the sentiments of mental abuse or those kinds of things that, you know, caseworkers are supposed to lobby for and social workers. But I think, I think being spanked puts some teeth into your own pants. Like, you really better learn your lesson, because if you don't, if you don't learn your lesson, wait until we get home. Wait until we get home. You'll learn your lesson, you'll never do it again, even kneeling on rice, uncooked rice. I think some of those disciplines need to be brought back and seriously considered, because a lot of the youth these days are just beyond control. Even when parents are trying to discipline, it's kind of a dub- a, a real double-edged sword for parents, because, Luhana, you cannot sometimes spank your kid, because now it's mental abuse. Even taking Wi-Fi from children these days is considered mental abuse. Some children not having phones is considered mental abuse. So at what point do we, we discipline children? Or at what point is this discipline gonna be allowed? So I, I, I support my colleague, Dwayne, and we, we, again, will try, will have it tried and tested in its own court, whether or not the body pushes for it to be passed, and that's the decision of the body. But again, it, it will be an option for the judiciary to follow through with. Again, we don't control what the circumstances are of individuals being guilty or not guilty. And that's just the unfortunate reality of our due process. Thank you again, Madam Speaker. Thank you to Senator Santa, who has undying patience for all of these issues we face. Have a good day.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think it's easy to sit up here and say, we've had it. Who hasn't had it? Who hasn't breached the state where we're just fed up with the way things are with the crime, right? And I think what's enabling this conversation to be had is that our judicial system is failing us in so many ways, failing the victims. But I'm just not comfortable looking to an autocratic, undemocratic country like Singapore, for examples. We live in a democratic society. The author of this legislation talks about how clean and orderly Singapore is. Yeah, because they have very repressive public order laws. Because they lock people up, they throw them in jail, throw away the key if you're holding a sign outside the courthouse. Because they have a strong, autocratic, borderline authoritarian government. Because they're one of the leading Asian countries in violating human rights. We live under the American flag. I don't think we should be looking to these Asian countries that don't treat their citizens well. They don't even allow gay marriage in Singapore. And we're here to hear the public, not to flip them the bird, because we don't agree with what they're saying. So I commend the, the people for testifying against this measure, because it's, we're in a scary position right here. We're in a scary position. We're willing to, to throw away what makes us a democracy, all because we're frustrated with the crime. Luhana, if you're frustrated with the crime, call your buddies at Attalooop and tell them to do a better job of enforcing it. And caning is not spanking. I wanna read from this, this Malaysian Law Journal that describes what caning is. Caners are all robustly built and hold quite high grades in the martial arts. This is from Singapore. They wield a half-inch-thick, four-foot-long rattan cane, which is the cane that is described in the bill that will be used for caning people. The night before, it's thoroughly soaked in water, so that it will not break upon making contact with the victim. The caner then takes a measured distance from the victim, who at this point is bent over a trestle and tied down with his buttocks exposed. From this measured distance, he wields with all the force of his body weight and strikes the rear butt with a cane. Upon contact, it results in the splitting of the skin, a flaying of the skin where the bare butt ends up entirely bloodied. The individuals, in addition to screaming, will normally urinate on themselves, faint and go into shock. The individuals require hospitalization, it results in permanent physical scarring. Now, I know that the, the state of our island and the crime is probably making some people excited when I read this definition, but then there's probably something wrong with you. Because I'm just not willing to trade in our humanity so we can inflict punishment that is not severe. We're, we're sitting here saying, people aren't being punished for crimes? I'm the chair of Public Safety. I got the Department of Corrections telling me that they have 780 inmates and detainees four to a cell. And you're gonna tell me we're not punishing people for crimes? We're punishing people for crimes. Do we need to do a better job of it? Absolutely. But do we need to turn into some third-world communist police state to do that? I don't think so. I absolutely do not think so. So I don't wanna commend anybody. I think it's easy to sit up here and play the politics and say, oh, you're gonna stick up for the criminals? I don't think that's what you guys are doing. I think you're speaking reasonably. And if people don't understand how basic this is, how, how egregious, how human rights violations and treaties are things that should be taken seriously, not crumpled up and thrown by the wayside, because we want a quick solution to problems that we all face. That's why we're a democracy. So I wanna thank you guys for coming out and providing this testimony. And I'm, I'm frustrated too. I've had it. I'm not here to celebrate criminals or to watch them go unpunished, but I'm definitely not here to turn our island into something that it's not. Even though I was spanked as a child, I never spanked my kids. Well, maybe once. But we're sitting up here laughing and talking about Santa this and Santa that, but just remember, what we're really talking about here is eroding our island and going in the direction that a lot of these, these countries, that we should not be emulating Malaysia and Singapore, and talking about how clean and orderly, orderly they are, because they're doing things to their people that we should not even entertain doing. That's what separates us from them. And I wanna keep that separation, because, you know, I like living in a nation of laws. You know, I wanna see criminals punished just as much as the next person. And I think there's ways we can do that within our system. I don't think we need to look at Singapore or go look at Russia or any of these other countries that have, you know, human rights records that are atrocious. We should not be looking to them for the example. And I, I just, I'm not comfortable with, with how much distance this conversation is getting and how out-of-the-norm comments like the ones you guys are making seem to a lot of people. To me, it's just very basic, you know? We, we, we live in a nation of laws, and we do things a certain way so that we don't become the thing that we hate. And I think, you know, moving forward with this legislation, we're, we're embarking on a slippery slope, and I'm just not comfortable with it. And, and thank you again for your testimony. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much for everybody that came out and testified. I appreciate, you know, the testimony from the two of you, but, you know, where do we go from here? Okay? And maybe as a request, if you will, to, to social work, okay? How do we get here? And where do we go from here? I don't, I don't particularly like the, you know, the idea of the caning, but what do we do? Okay? And I, I've noticed, I saw in, in, you know, your testimony, that we need the prevention programs, we need the programs, but how did we get here? A lot of times, before you can prevent something, you gotta talk about how you got there to begin with. I think that's what we need to also focus on, is how do we get here before we can even start to figure out, what do we need to do from there? Okay? So I'm asking, pretty please, I'll even say, pretty please. Go ahead.
So first off, I'm speaking as a citizen of Guam and also a social work student who's still learning. So first off, you know, as stated in the bill, I've noticed that there was no stakeholders involved. And so I just wanna reiterate that it's very important to. And so, I just want to reiterate that it's very important to involve stakeholders when it comes to creating bills that would involve physical punishment. And other than that, no other comments. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. Once again, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. The sponsor may close on the bill. Would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been going around the island, and a lot of people have been, you know, for every one person that tells me that they didn't agree with the bill, I got 10 people. And it's amazing that it's actually most of the manomkoos that are agreeing with me. I got one manomko told me, he goes, "You know, at first, I thought the measure was silly." Then he says, "But I thought about it." And it kind of brings us back to when we were kids and how we were punished and how we learned from that, and we didn't do anything after that, and we learned from our mistakes. This was all about caning only. It wasn't about turning us into an autocratic state or a thorough world country. It's not about that. This was trying to find a way to somehow deliver justice to not only the criminal, the perpetrator, but to uphold the dignity of those who were wrong. And so, like, again, my wife told me this morning, she says, "Just go out there, do what you can, and whatever goes, if it happens, it happens." I'm very thankful for my colleagues and for the testimony this afternoon and this evening, you know, for, because what I really wanted was to, let's have a dialogue about crime as well. It's very important. And I did say that I actually intended to do capital punishment, but, you know, I didn't want to go that route, because, like I said, I'd be putting a brethren to death. You know, we're such a small island. Could you imagine putting somebody to death who might be your cousin, maybe your uncle? Right? And perhaps, what if you put him to death and he was actually innocent? So, caning, for me, was a compromise, because even if he was not guilty and he was punished, still be alive, still go home. And if he was punished and he was just and right, and he served his sentence, he can go home. I don't know what's more restorative than that. But I'm just as frustrated as a lot of people in our community, and I gave it a shot. And I'm very thankful for both the Republicans and the Democrats here, who called me Senator Santa, because that's very, most important, and for showing their support, or not their support, you know? It's okay. I don't judge people that way. I don't do people that way. But I'm very thankful that they were able to get heard and that they put their feelings and concerns out there, because maybe from here on out, we can maybe find a viable solution for all of us, for you also, chief. And I'm very thankful for bringing that, you know, that thing to light, because that's something that we might also have to look at. But I'm very thankful for my colleagues and for everybody here who took part in this. I'm very grateful. Senator Roy, Senator Chris, Senator Frank, Jess, the body, Tom Fisher, Madam Speaker, and everybody over here, even to you, to include Chris. But thank you very much, and if this doesn't go far, you know, let's come back and let's do something else. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sido Massey, Senator. There being no additional individuals to present testimony, the committee will consider Bill 21-37, C.O.R., dearly heard. We will continue to accept written testimony on Bills 7, 79, and 21 for the next 10 working days until April 25, 2023. It can be submitted via email to senatorsurlahigwam@gmail.com or hand-delivered to our office here at the Congress Building. Public hearing is now adjourned. The time is 6:35 PM. Sido Massey Torres.